Okay, welcome to Murfreesboro City Council Tuesday, June 3 meeting where we're continuing our discussion on the budget. And welcome everyone here. And Councilman Gillie has our prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll bow with me, please. To God, our most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you blessed us with and this wonderful city in which we live. Father, tonight as we come here to make decisions about the next budget for this city, I want to thank you for the wisdom that you bestowed upon and all the hard work that's been put into this budget by all of the employees and department heads of the city. And Father, we thank you so much for the reminder that this budget actually gives us just how blessed we are in the city of Murfreesboro. Give us your guidance tonight in your wisdom. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I would like to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start. Everyone did a good job, made a good start yesterday. So we'll start with Chief Christman on the police department, and he'll also handle the drug fund, which can also would be found on page 92 and 222 respectively. Chief?
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, good afternoon. An honor and a privilege to be here with you this afternoon and present the FY15 budget for the Murfreesboro Police Department. I am tremendously proud of the staff of our department, from the youngest employee to the most senior, regardless of what their duties and responsibilities are. We have outstanding employees, and the success of that department is responsible to the hard work that all of those people put in every day over there, serving our citizens and serving all of us. And I think that's important to say at the outset because none of the successes that we achieve as a department are possible without the dedicated selfless service, in many cases, of those people who have chosen to make Murfreesboro their work home. I'd add one more thing to that. None of that's possible without the support of our citizens, and particularly without the support of this mayor and council, and without the support of our city manager and his staff. So I want to say thank you, first of all, for all of the things that you've done to help us provide for the safety and security of the city of Murfreesboro with our outstanding partners at Murfreesboro Fire. And it's an honor and a privilege to serve with you and serve alongside you. The 229 police officers, 32 dispatchers, and 21 non-sworn support staff, including 28 school patrol and four part-time staff members contribute in our city to the always challenging fight against crime and the protection of our community. I know earlier in this year you got a copy of our annual report. All of the detailed data is in there about last year's body of work, but it repeats, it's worth repeating briefly. In 2013 Part 1 crimes, the most serious crimes reported to the police in the United States of America decreased by 2% overall in the city of Murfreesboro. The number of reported larcenies and arsonists increased slightly, while homicides, rapes, robberies, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, and assaults all decreased. That's not an accident. There's a lot of hard work that goes into those numbers from our citizens and from all the people that work for the city of Murfreesboro. Our officers responded to 101,940 calls for service last year, which is in round numbers about 280 per day. They completed 29,000 official police reports, initiated 11,965 criminal charges against defendants, and issued 37,749 citations, and that includes 15,442 violations and over 22,000 warnings. And you know, when we talk about warnings, a lot of times people get the wrong message from that. If you stop a traffic violator and they may have committed four offenses, just because they've committed four doesn't mean you've got to write them tickets for all four. Sometimes it's just good policing to cite the most serious of the violations, issue warnings for the others, and you do some tremendous policing while you're on those traffic stops. Murfreesboro police officers made 18,000 traffic stops last year. And while they're doing that, they're checking driver license, stolen status on the vehicle, outstanding warrants, registration violation, proof of insurance, a whole host of things. So there's a lot of just really good policing that happens during those times. The council's safe and livable neighborhoods priority for Murfreesboro Police begins with making Murfreesboro a safe place to live, work, and visit, and we strive to address quality of life issues in our city every day through the reduction of calls at repeat locations and the use of special units. One of the things that appears in your budget tonight and that Mr. Lyons covered, I think, in his opening message was the fact that we asked to add three new police positions this year for our directed patrol unit. Directed patrol is that unit which is assigned to deal with problem areas of our city without having to be charged with responding to calls for service. So if I get a call from a resident who says there's a drug-related issue in my neighborhood, that's a quality of life issue. I don't need to have the zone officer trying to attend to that while he or she is responding to calls for service. I need to dedicate people to that complaint, resolve that issue, identify the people that are responsible, and hold them accountable. And that's what directed patrol does. That was originally our crime suppression unit from back in 2008. We kind of reestablished it, redirected it a little bit, if you will, and those people have done tremendous work for us over the past several years. For example, if you looked in that annual report, the directed patrol unit in 2013, and this is seven or eight people, seven, I believe, last year, those people made 559 drug arrests, 17 weapons violation arrests, 597 other misdemeanor arrests, 95 felony arrests, and served 495 warrants. That one group was responsible for almost 765 enforcement actions. So what we've asked the city manager to do, and he's been gracious enough to support, is to add three more people to that group because we need to run two teams so that they can directly respond to things that address safe and livable neighborhood issues as you've directed. We're continuing to work on our two-way radio systems. Two-way radio system communication for police and fire is probably one of the most important things, one of the most critical things that as a community we can invest in. You have blessed us with supporting that, and that's moving along. A part of that is the construction and installation of radio towers at various locations throughout the city to give us next-generation radio coverage for our first responders. One of the tremendous tragedies at 9/11 was that police and firefighters couldn't talk to each other in New York. We're resolving that issue, and we'll resolve it for the future generations of police and firefighters. In terms of strong and sustainable financial and economic health, obviously, if the police and your public safety officials are doing a good job, hopefully, it creates a climate where people want to move here, they want to live here, they want to go to school here, they want to establish businesses here, they want to be involved in economic development, and we take very seriously our role in promoting that and to provide education to our local businesses as well as our schools. When we talk about customer service, obviously, we've spent a great deal of time with Ms. Logan and other members of the staff on verbal judo. We are integrating new mobile data terminals that will provide better access to communications for our citizens, and we continue with the addition of the overall Creek School. We will be adding more personnel to the school system to continue providing drug abuse resistance education training and gang resistance education and training, as well as providing support for city schools and the issues that they deal with on their campuses every day. I'm very proud of the work that's been done with all of our schools and our police department in addressing school safety issues, and we continue to work diligently on that. From an accomplishment standpoint, obviously, we were able to attain state accreditation last year through the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police. We launched an online reporting system last year, COP Logic, where people can actually file fairly low-level, if you will, crime reports online. We reorganized and specialized our criminal investigation division, and the big thing with your support was we were able to purchase the property at 1004 North Island Avenue for the new future headquarters for police. And that is just an unbelievable step in the future of our department and progressive policing for the city of Murfreesboro. We are very actively involved in engaging our community. There's a long list of agencies that we partner with in your budget, so I won't include those here, but I will tell you that some of the goals we have for the coming fiscal year is to continue our aggressive gang intervention strategy. Several of you, I think, have had questions about those homicides that we've experienced this year. We've had seven so far, which is an increase. Four of those perpetrators have been arrested. There are three that remain at large, and I can tell you through daily updates that our staff is working those cases aggressively, and I anticipate that we'll see movement on them soon. A part of that involves leveraging resources with our federal partners from FBI, DEA, ATF, United States Marshals, the United States Marshals, the Secret Service, and others, and we are closely working with them, not only on those issues, but other issues that affect the quality of life for our city. We are continuing to work on our two-way radio system build-out. With the tremendous help of our legal department, we're working on a new record ordinance that we hope to bring to you later in the summer. And one of the things that we've worked diligently on is trying to get our field-based reporting system up and going. That is operational, and we hope that we will see more units coming online with that as we move into the summer. The budget is presented in your package. It is a fairly straightforward budget, although there is an increase in our budget for this year. We do have new positions, and obviously, we have increases in the salary system that have been proposed with your blessing. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about the budget or about the operations of the police department.
Thank you, Chief Christman. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Young?
Chief, who serves warrants, the city and the county and the state?
The county is responsible for the service of all warrants, civil and criminal. There are times when a Murfreesboro police officer may seek a warrant for someone in connection with an ongoing investigation, and it may be that we know where they are at any given time, and we can make a quick arrest on those and serve those warrants. If they're not served fairly immediately after the warrants are obtained, then typically the sheriff's department serves those.
Okay. Thank you.
And Chief, I'll civil warrant you serve through the sheriff's department.
Yes, you're correct.
Chief Christman, you used a term that I'm not familiar with, and I read it the other night, and you just used it, verbal judo classus. What is that?
It came to, into popular jargon, I guess, probably 10 or 15 years ago in law enforcement, in the law enforcement world, because police officers fairly frequently have contact with people who may be confrontational, may be violent, who may have an elevated voice tone or elevated or expressive body movements. And so there was an effort made to begin preparing police officers with a set of communication tactics that would allow them to de-escalate those situations instead of further escalating them out of control and maybe resulting in physical violence or injury to either party to de-escalate those things and try to bring them back down to a level where people could communicate effectively and resolve whatever those issues are. The police department, as well as all city employees, have, under Ms. Logan's very capable tutelage, wherever she might be, she's in the back back here, I don't know how many she's taught, thousands of sessions or thousands of attendees by now, but we've actually, the city's actually taken that concept citywide as a part of our customer service initiative, and the results have been phenomenal.
Chief, do you keep up with how many eligible retirees you'll have coming up in the budget year? And are we able with the officers we're bringing on to replace what you may have that's retiring?
I can, we don't keep up with it formally. Anecdotally, I can pretty much tell you who is eligible and who I anticipate would be making those kinds of decisions at any given time, within the next year, within the next 18 months or so. Now, we actually had two people that announced their retirements within the past 10 or 15 days. Some of them are unknown, and some people will retire early because they reach a point in their career when perhaps another opportunity presents itself, and timing is of the essence. But I can pretty much tell you who is retirement-eligible and what the likelihood is of when they might make that decision. But again, that's all subject to that individual's situation.
So I guess what the concern is, if we, you have three new officers coming on, and say you had six retire, so you're going to, at a net loss of three. How do we account for that loss? When someone retires, someone may be promoted up into another position, or how do we keep up?
What we've been able to do so far is whenever those positions retire, we're able to refill those positions because in many situations, they're positions of authority if they've been there for a long time. We need to backfill those positions so that that area of responsibility can be covered and that work product can continue. And then if you have someone that retires at an elevated level, then that creates the domino effect all the way down to the entry-level position. And we've been able to backfill all of those as quickly as we can, and city management has always supported that because of the need for staffing. Now, that does create a situation where you have additional funding that's expended from our labor budget for that year because you're actually paying someone to fill that job currently, and then you have expended benefit hours or benefit hours that they'll be expending as they use those, the retiree does. So you have a doubling, if you will, I suppose, of costs there, but as we've discussed before, that's one of the wonderful benefits that the city's provided, is the ability to accrue those sick and vacation leave and then use those toward retirement.
The other thing I had on my list, and this is probably more of a city manager and chief question, that if we feel like that we're a couple of years out on our new headquarters being, coming online, if we are starting to budget now for a building that's that size for the increases in maintenance, increases in operational costs, how will we start accounting for those things?
Excuse me. We've got a meeting tomorrow with our architect to specifically look at the heating and cooling system because we think we can find an efficient manner to heat, more efficient manner to heat and cool that building versus what we're at now. So we are trying to look at some of those operational costs. As we began to tour the police departments earlier this year, one of the things that was pointed out to us in every location was even looking at the selection of flooring, what they did on the walls to decrease some of the maintenance costs on the building. So that's clearly before us, and we're going to be paying attention to that.
Rob, when you say that, are you referencing a geothermal system?
Yes, that'll be one of the things that we're definitely going to take a look at. Mayor, I might just add to the question that the chief had answered in response to some of the retirements. Police department has done an outstanding job getting specialized training and advanced training for their officers from the chief level on down through, I believe, lieutenant and now getting down into the sergeant level. We've got outstanding coverage in terms of getting each one of those individuals some specialized training. So that idea of succession planning, the chief has done a very good job of preparing people to replace himself and those who work for him.
Again, with the support of our manager and our mayor and council, none of that's possible without you.
All right, we have any other questions?
And Mayor, if there are no other questions about that, the drug fund budget appears on page 222, and there is a summary there about that fund and what it provides. Obviously, that helps to fund our drug enforcement eradication efforts throughout the city. Part of that initiative is to make sure that with that in mind, our city remains to be a viable location for economic growth and development. We do spend a good deal of our time providing educational programs for fifth-grade children and younger in Murfreesboro city schools, and there's some funding from the drug fund that assists with that. We have added as a part of our drug fund expenditures, three narcotic detection canines, and recently added some additional canine vehicles and equipment that were funded with some of that funding. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have about the drug fund.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none, chief. Appreciate everything.
Thank you all very much.
We'll move to the fire and rescue department. It's on page 100, and Chief Gaines and Assistant Chief Jurnan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff. Today I submit for your review and hopeful approval, the 2014-2015 proposed budget. The department responded to 10,313 calls for service during the fiscal year 2013 and is projected to have responded to 8,524 by the end of the fiscal year 2014. The reduction in the cost for services due to a clarification of the current medical first responder contract agreement between MFRD and Rutherford County Medical Services. The fiscal year 2014 accomplishments, we placed two new heavy rescues in service with personnel training to provide special operation service. We ordered two custom-built quint trucks and one custom-built pumper truck, installed 164 smoke alarms and 118 batteries to our Project Safe. And recently, we revamped our Project Safe, and we targeted certain districts, and we're going to go back and finish up and make it a citywide project as well, but we targeted certain districts, and we kind of revamped it and sent people back out into the community. We purchased four aviation portable radios that enables us to monitor aircraft emergencies, and we also conducted several drills in relation to that. We participated in two multi-agency drills to improve our interoperability between the agencies. We implemented plane text radio language, replaced mobile data terminals in our emergency apparatus, and our fire and rescue department honor guard placed second in the national honor guard competition at the fire department instructors conference. And we conducted our 11th citizen fire academy, and the estimated property value saved by our department was seven and a half million dollars. I want to touch on one aspect of the council priorities and directives that you've given, and that's the community engagement. And our department is very engaged in the community. The child safety seat, since its inception, we have checked 380 seats, and we have distributed 55 through our assistance program, and we have had 11 inspection stations established. The SET team, special events team, for the fiscal year of July 1st, 2013 through July 1st, 2014, the special events team participated in 15 events, and they were events in such venues as Uncle Dave Makin' Days, the Half Marathon, Jazz Fest on the Square, the Duck Derby, and so on. With an average attendance of six people working per event, we logged an estimated 7,825 contacts for the 15 events. I'm going to touch briefly on our main goals for this coming fiscal year. The main goals for the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue is to upgrade the medical first responder to basic life support with the addition of Assistant Chief Lawson, our chief medical. We are on target for the projected rollout date to enhance our service to the next level. And to date, we have 85% of our personnel that have already credentialed, and we have told of 13 that we still have to get through the process. So we've got 67 of the other 80, in essence, that are already credentialed so we can start the process. Without a signed agreement in place, I cannot give you a specific date, but I do know and hope and anticipate it will be in the first quarter of this fiscal year. The tentative budget is projected at $16,527,475. This is a projected increase of $840,674 from the fiscal year 14 budget, and approximately 88% of that increase is due to an anticipated 3.5% raise. The estimated overtime pay line item was increased 25,000 to allow for more BLS and special ops training while off-duty so that we can maintain our staffing levels, and we project basic life support response in various line items, we have a total of $38,637 in those various line items to include equipment and training expenses associated with the basic life response. EMT supplements listed on the salary sheets were increased from 78 to 83 personnel for a total increase of $6,037.20. And we were awarded a FEMA grant totaling $35,000 for the purchase of a fire investigation trailer, and the grant is budgeted in your book under miscellaneous expense of other federal grants. And FEMA's a matching fund grant, FEMA's going to fund 80%, which is roughly $28,000, and we'll fund the other 7%. And we also have a line item expenditure totaling $15,977 for the purchase of equipment that we will need for the fire investigation trailer. Before being awarded the grant last year, we did apply for a trailer with the equipment, but we were not awarded. We reapplied, we left off the equipment, and we were granted the award. So it looks like we'll have to fund that part ourselves. $6,600 is included in the budget for the purchase of equipment and gear needed for a second water rescue team, and several items are included in addition to fixed asset portion of the budget, such as 17 rocket vehicle rattles that are needed to enhance our connectivity to our cellular provider. And that's a key component that we hope to utilize on our mobile data terminals, that's the onboard computer and all the apparatus. And our CAD system, our computer system, is designed and is capable, and it already has the applications on it that we can do wireless communication, but we don't have that connectivity in place. We don't have any redundancy connectivity. Sometimes we don't have any connectivity at all. So as far as the MDTs, if you're listening to our radio transmissions, you're going to say a lot of times that the MDT is not working, and we state that so that it is on the record that the MDT is not working so we can track the days they're working and how much they're not working. But this will alleviate that. It'll give us connectivity, if you so approve. And we also have in the budget 17 knox box replacements, a total of $9,945. And the knox box keys are for area businesses to secure the box on each apparatus. And the boxes that we currently have do not have the capability of tracking key removal. We have nowhere tracking who removed it, how long it was removed, and when it was put back. We also have a line item for Fire Station 6 at $22,000 to remodel the restroom. And we have other significant increases, such as bill is increased $22,000, and this is due to the replacing of the concrete ramp at Station 6. Response supplies increased $20,000 for the purchase of medical equipment, equipment for the fire investigation trailer, and equipment for additional water rescue personnel. Our telephones are increased by $14,525, but that cost should be reduced by January 2015 due to the elimination of the ring-down lines, and that's our redundancy lines. And I think that to go in and parse that... that to go in and parse that particular item out of the billing invoice, it averages about $350 per station per month for that redundancy line. And the reason for the decrease in the training line item is a decrease of $24,598. Last year, we budgeted for two trainees to attend academy at a total of $6,000. We budgeted for the BLS trauma classes, which is the pre-hospital trauma life support classes at $15,000, and we also budgeted special op class that we do not need this coming year, and that was a total of $5,500. If you have any courses at this time, I would like to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, we have questions?
Did you say 80% of the total increase of your budget is due to the raise?
88%.
88%?
Yes, sir.
Chief, the BLS process has been a long process, hasn't it?
Yes, sir, it has. It has.
I'm probably just saying what I think I'm reading between the lines on all the council members who are up here, and I know you guys have been working extremely hard on it, and with Assistant Chief Lawson now working on it, but...
The staff's been working diligently so that we can accomplish this, and we've had good cooperation with the county as well, so, you know, I'm looking forward to the date when we do start that service.
I echo with the mayor. I think we're all very anxious to see that upgrade become reality as soon as possible. I know you all are working towards that, but I know the employees in your department are looking forward to that, and you've got folks looking to take on more responsibility, in essence, you really want to reward that as quickly as you can.
Yes, sir. The men and women of the department, they're community servants, they're community-minded, and I think that's evidenced in their daily activities.
Very much so. Thank you.
Chief, I know when we communicate with the firefighters, I know we continuously hear how much they are enjoying the new radios and stuff that we picked up about a year or so back, and how much louder they are in situations that they're using them in stuff, and certainly, that's the biggest desire we've got, is to make it as safe as we possibly can for these courageous men who go into situations that are sometimes just unbelievably challenging. Just for example, yesterday, I know you had the chemical situation with the pool place out on Memorial Boulevard, and how professionally it was handled, and how well, even though it caused a traffic jam, how well, what a great job you did of protecting our citizens. And so, we did get to see the new rescue unit the other day that you've acquired, and I guess that's the first of two that you're going to receive, and certainly, it's first-class equipment, and it's nice that we have the ability to provide you with those things, and it's not the council that does it, it's the citizens of Murfreesboro who provide it. And so, I thank you for the wonderful job that firefighters do, and I thank the citizens for supporting your department.
Yes, sir. The crews yesterday did an excellent job in mitigating that situation.
Of all the ones that took the cold water challenge this weekend survived?
I'm not sure.
Okay, we have any other questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to Building and Co.'s Department. Mr. Whitaker, on page 108 in your book.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleased to be able to report that this is the third consecutive year that we have experienced increases in our permitting revenue as well as construction in the city of Murfreesboro. We had projected 1.9 million for revenue for this year, and it appears we're going to exceed that by a little bit, $675,000, I believe, is a pretty close number. Next year, for the 14-15 budget, we have increased that by 15% over this 1.9 revenue projection we have for this year. Again, I'm happy that it keeps going up every year. As far as our office personnel, we have requested to create a plans review position in our department. We plan on filling that position in-house, so it would not be adding a new, it would be a new position, but not another person. We feel that's necessary to do that, to be able to keep up with the demands on the system as far as the number of plans coming in, so we can keep up with getting the plans out in effective timeframe. Also, we're asking for administrative support specialist, a part-time position. The reason we're asking for part-time is we have an employee that has graciously told us they're going to be retiring at the end of next year. They gave us a heads-up, give us plenty of time so we can start training to replace that person. They have a wealth of knowledge, and we need to make sure that we don't let them leave without sharing that with us, so this part-time position would allow us to train until they leave, and then our hopes are that the part-time person would go full-time with us, and that's going to be our plan. So we would not, basically, when they retire, we won't be adding a person to our staff. That would be our new positions that we're asking for. Again, no net gain in the number of employees once that person retires. Some of the accomplishments that we were able to meet this year, we adopted the 2012 code. For those of you that were involved in that, no, we went to great lengths to let the building community know what we were doing, tried to inform them as best as we could. In fact, we had five training classes that we held. We had a attendance of 244 people that come to those training classes. We tried to be as transparent as possible. We got input early on from the contractors and developers, and we tried to accommodate them as best we could on adoption and give them plenty of time to make those transitions. Also, we completed the ADA study. For those of you that have been with us for some time, about 17, 18 years ago, we conducted a study. We did that study again last year. It took us about a year. We did that in-house. I'd like to brag on one of my employees, Mr. Trey Axum, did that. He included that in his daily inspections. He would take a little bit of time and go by. He inspected close to 100 city buildings for ADA compliance. Now, that is a great savings to the taxpayers because we didn't have to outsource that, pay an architectural firm to do that. So basically, we've identified what we need to do, and next year, we'll be working with Architect to try to come up with some bid specs and plans to make those necessary corrections. But I would like to brag on him a little bit, because like I said, that was done in-house and while he was doing his normal duties. Also, we brought, if you recall, the flag sign change to the council, which was approved. If you went around this last holiday, you've seen a lot of the assembly uses of churches and what have you, had multiple flags out. That was part of what the council approved last year. We will be working with the legal department, as usual in planning department, to bring additional sign changes to the council next year. We will be bidding, like I said, bidding out the ADA renovation project, and we also oversee, a lot of people may not know, we oversee a lot of construction projects for the city. For instance, we will be working on the City Hall renovation, not only working with the tax department on theirs, but also we're going to try to repaint and re-carpet City Hall, give it a little bit new look, and that is a pretty monumental task, going in and do this, so we've been challenged with doing that, is well as trying to look at our plans review process and permitting process, to try to make that more efficient and streamline that, so we're working on that. I think some of y'all were present at the meeting that we had a few weeks ago, actually in the council chambers. We had a attendance of about 102 people, I believe, came to that meeting. Also, I'd like to point out, with all that revenue that we're bringing in, curious kind of how we stand with other cities our size, and last year, we actually sent in numbers, we've got an MTEST benchmarking, and they are in your budget. On page 259, you'll see the Building and Co. departments. You can see that our actual permitting cost is about 10% below the other cities that have reported that we're compared to. So we're kind of pleased with that, that we're actually low average on the cost of our permits, and as far as the cost for the inspections we make, for the inspections that we make for property maintenance and for the building inspections we make, we're actually right at baseline with everybody else on those. So that was good information to get. That's pretty much our budget for the 14-15 year. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time, if there's any.
Questions? Does it concern you that your permits, your workload's going up, but we're taking an inspector away?
I have a great staff, and they're, you know, they'll take on any challenge, but actually, that is a good question. If you recall, three years ago, when the economy went down, we had a lot of vacant property, a lot of abandoned homes. We shifted that workload to take care of that. Now, those abandoned properties have been absorbed, sold off, so we're shifting that workload back to new construction. So we're pretty flexible, so basically, what we did is we just rearranged what we were doing at that time. So at this time, we can handle this load, and it's partly because, like I said, a lot of that property's been sold off. In fact, the planning department will tell you probably here shortly, the number of lots we have available out there are quickly diminishing.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the planning department, page 113. Mr. Adelat, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To start out, I'd just remind you that the planning department has been severed from the engineering department this last year and again this year, so our budget, the past year numbers looked a little bit large, and now they look a little bit smaller, so that will explain one of the big differences that you see in the budget from years past. The planning department has seven employees. The greatest part of our funding is salaries for those employees. The rest of it is primarily what it takes to operate an office. Some of our office supplies bleed over into the other departments, as we have a suite of offices in our department, including information, the IT, engineering, transportation, all of us in the same suite of offices, and sometimes we kind of use each other's stuff. Some of our funding this year will include funding for the comprehensive plan. You'll notice that there is funding under surveys and studies for $250,000. That's primarily what Mr. Alliance has included for the comprehensive plan that we're going to be working on. We'll be bringing you a contract later on this, hopefully this month. The planning department provides staff to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Zoning Appeals, to the Historic Zoning Commission. We provide the staffing for them to prepare their agendas, to prepare staff comments for them on the items that come before them, and for their minutes. We expect to have about 48 meetings per year involving these boards. The Planning Commission meets twice a month, so we are pretty busy. You see it in the recommendations that come to you and the public hearings that you set for rezones and annexations, all those are first studied by the Planning Commission. The planning department coordinates the review of Platts and plans. It looks like this year, we're going to be right on, mark somewhere around 165 site plans. Next year, I'm projecting more than that. I'm basically budgeting for about 170 site plans, but it wouldn't surprise me if we don't have more than that. The economy is demonstrating a good recovery, and it's being felt in the level of activity that the planning department is seeing. We expect to see over 165 preliminary and final Platts. Now, that'd be the Platts alone, the number of lots will be much, much greater. I expect that if we don't see at least 1,000 lots, we will be probably not having enough lots to sustain the rate of building activity that we're seeing. So we need to see quite a number of lots come in. The number of lots that we have in inventory, as Mr. Whitaker alluded to, is the lowest I've seen since I've been planning director. I've been tracking the number of lots since the late 1980s, and we're at the lowest point that I can ever recall or have seen. And that is a big concern to me, because that's important for our ability to remain competitive, so I do want to see the lots coming in. Fortunately, the agendas have been big, so we've got a lot of lots that will be coming, they're under construction, so we'll probably see a lot of that happening over the summer, and come September or October, we'll be having an idea of where we stand for the year. One of the things that the planning department does, we try to involve ourselves with neighborhood meetings, when we see items of considerable public interest involving items that are coming to the Planning Commission and City Council. So we do a lot of outreach, we're on the phone quite a bit with people who have questions about the flood insurance program. We try to be the repository of information, letters of map amendments, et cetera. The planning department works on annexation studies, we also work on the plans of services. That's an overview of our department. We expect that the recovery is going to continue to affect us, and we expect a busy year, particularly with the work on the comprehensive plan that'll be coming up. I'll be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adelat. Thank you again. We'll move to the change order, I mean, the engineering department.
And Mayor, there must be some mistake, he's not at the end of the agenda.
That's right, he's usually at the...
Moving on up, for sure.
Just kidding, Mr. Griffith. If we can't laugh at ourselves, who can we laugh at?
That's true.
Yeah, it's true. Just call Doug on his phone.
No, you guys love me, for sure. Thank you, Mayor Bifarland, and members of the City Council. I do have the opportunity to work with some of the best people every day in the engineering department. They're a group of folks that come in every day and do their work and are willing to help out in any way they can. Because of this attitude, we're fortunate to be able to serve the residents of Murfreesboro either directly or indirectly through working with other departments, and for this, I'm very grateful for them. Currently, we're managing two of the largest construction projects that you have seen a couple of change orders on, Joby Jackson Parkway and the last phase of what was formerly called the Southwest Loop Road, and is now called Veterans Parkway. We expect to complete the construction of Joby Jackson Parkway later this year, which will be about six months actually ahead of schedule, and then Veterans Parkway will be completed later next year. If you'll notice, our budget, the largest increase in this year's budget is basically for the road projects, which were previously reported in the capital improvements fund. This is about 1.9 million, and includes money that which will be refunded to the city by either state or federal government. The projects include the Mill Tennessee Boulevard widening, which are in front of MTSU's campus, which should begin construction later this year, and both the Cherry Lane extension and Bradiville Pike widening projects, which are currently in design. Last year, the council approved a very helpful change with the merger of the street and engineering departments. I'd like to say that the merger really helped us work seamlessly to be able to serve our residents more effectively. Just today, our administrative assistant, one of our administrative assistants noted a phone call that she had received that a resident was shocked of how quick we were able to repair a broken sidewalk in her neighborhood. She said she literally went to bed the night of the request, and it was repaired by the time she woke up the next morning. With the merger, we promoted Raymond Hillis to superintendent, and he's done a phenomenal job in leading the great group of employees that we have at the Street Division, and under his leadership, we've been able to accomplish things like this resident noted this morning. Under his direction, they're reaching new heights. Under his direction, they're reaching new heights, and I'd like to allow him just a little bit of time to discuss some of the plans that he has this coming, this coming year.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to stand before you. And thank you for the opportunity to serve as superintendent of the street division. We are excited. I tell my folks all the time, there's two kinds of people, the people that say that it can't be done and those that do it. And we want to be the latter of those two, and we want to say that it can be done. So we're very aggressive, very excited, as Chris has already mentioned, with the merger of the two departments. We're very effective with the knowledge and the skill that the engineering department has and the ability that the street department has. It's a perfect team. They may supply the brain power, but we supply the muscle. So it's, it is a great team, and together, we get it done, and we get it done as effectively as possible. As most of you already know, we are responsible for right-of-way maintenance, including the litter removal, street sweeping, storm drain management system. And so, you know, we have also taken an aggressive approach to working with the other departments and also with the customer service that we have taken a strong focus on. And with that being said, we have completed thus to date 80 storm drain projects in-house that we're very proud of with the guys there at the street division. And this gives them opportunity to learn and express and show their new skills and obviously save the city money as well. With that being said, this past leaf season, we worked with Joey over at Solid Waste, and together, we were able to, just on the street division side, we was able to collect over 1,000 tons of leaves, hauling over 213 loads, which was quite a large undertaking. Also, we responded to five winter storm events, placed down over 450 tons of salt. So, and we're looking at new ways to save money there as well and be more effective. I've already approached city management, and they've been so supportive in coming up with a new brine system, enables we can get out before the storm and hopefully get some of these highways treated. And we'll be looking forward to doing that this up and coming year as well, and replacing the salt, of course, that we've already used. And we've just, we've got a lot of things going on, and we are excited. So I'm here before you, if you had any questions before the street division, I'd be glad to answer.
Michelle, it doesn't seem like a week goes by that we don't get an email from a resident who's making a comment on the engineering and the street department on something that's been efficiently and quickly taken care of. And I'll go, I think the eight years I sat up here before being mayor, that Mayor Bragg would always say, "It's tough to find a pothole in Murfreesboro." So I think it'll be good to continue that tradition, and it is hard to find a pothole in Murfreesboro.
Thank you, sir.
And you guys do a, do a good job with making sure that our residents and our roads are maintained.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
And I'll follow up with that because apparently the other people are calling me because Graybar Lane, Kenneth Avenue, Sunset, and Allen Avenue are all two pieces. They're nothing but potholes. And Allen Avenue's been that way for almost two years now. We need to get something going on those. I've questioned you guys several times in a month of the understanding that hopefully July 1st, we'll start seeing some improvement in that area. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'll let Chris know.
This actually, Councilman Smotherman, it's actually the first streets that's on this year's paving budget. So it, they absolutely will, absolutely will be addressed. We've worked with the water and sewer department. A couple of years ago, I actually had some, did some, quite a bit extensive work on some line replacement in there. They're all done now, and we will, we'll get those first on the list.
Yes. I know we talked about that last year, but in our older neighborhoods where, before we go through and do our paving projects, are we not trying to work on water lines, existing sewer lines, electric lines, so we don't have to repave, tear it up again? And is that how we, we saw the street paving app last night?
Yes.
Is that sort of how we're coordinating that?
It is. It's, that was actually, was milled prior to the, prior to the water and sewer work that was being completed. And that's really been a lot of the, the problems on the, those streets that Councilman Smotherman mentioned, that they, they were milled, the work was completed, a little bit more extensive work than what was originally planned. And then, and again, we just missed the paving budget for, for last fall, and it had to move over into July of this year.
Okay. What's your timeline on a month? What's your window that you can pave, as far as when asphalt plants shut down?
We have about nine months out of the year that we can pave, and we'll go into a little bit at the, with the next item, the state street aid fund. We typically spend that money in about four months. We have about $2 million lined up, and it's, it very easily, you know, it may start off a little slow, maybe $400,000 to $500,000 a year, but once we get going, we'll, we'll spend that money. And it'll be spent up before the, before the winter, before the paving plants close for the winter. And it won't start back up until the following July.
And I know you guys are maintaining, what, close to 600 miles of roadway in the city of Murfreesboro, and I'm complaining about about three miles. So I understand that's kind of picky, but if you live on those streets and you're having to see it every single day, I understand those people's situation as well. So I look forward to July 1st.
As do I.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. All right, any other questions? All right, we'll move to the state street aid. Page 138.
And it, as I mentioned, it is the, it's the easiest fund that, that we manage as far as describing. It's basically the, the city's portion of the state gas tax. It's based on population and the largest portion of that, that really for maintenance of any, anything within the right-of-way, not just state, state routes, but any, any right-of-way maintenance at all. And about $2 million of it is used for, for paving, and the rest of it's used for repairs of sidewalks, curb and gutter, like I said, anything within the right-of-way. Also, signal work and striping. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the end.
Any questions? CNN, we'll move to the transportation department. Page 119. Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Pleased to be here this evening to present our FY15 Transportation Department budget. As you're aware, the transportation department is segregated into two distinct sections, one being the public transportation section and the other being the traffic section. The budget, the public transportation section is made up of two components, being our operating expenses and our fixed assets. Our fixed assets this year are very minimal, and our total budget in that, with the combination of the two, is a little over 1.4 million. And I would like to point out that out of that 1.4 million dollars, that we use a combination of state, federal funds, Fairbox revenue and so forth, to make up in this particular budget 79.7% of the entire expense, and leaving the 20.3% or approximately 293,000 of the general fund money to supplement that part of the budget. The budget this year has decreased by a little over $400,000, and that is primarily as a result of expending out the, or the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, also known as stimulus funds. Those projects have been spent out and are being closed by the end of this year. Is, looking at some of the accomplishments, this has been a busy year. Our Rover ridership, based on our projection for this year's, looking to increase about 1.5%. And that would be from a little over 250, 259,000 in last year to a little over 263,000 in this year. And I will say that this is the seventh year in a row that we've had increases in our ridership. It's become an extremely, I think, valuable and important program for the people that do use this. And we also begin the sheer service of our new buses in July of last year. If you may recall, that we did get nine brand-new buses, and we increased from 16-passenger to 23-passenger vehicles. We also began the environmental study and preliminary engineering on the new transit facility that we're looking to build. And we have continued with our expanded relax and ride service. In October 2012, we expanded that from 16 to 31 trips per day between Murfreesboro, LeMourne, and Smyrna, all into Nashville. The ridership on that has increased about 17.4% this last year, which is very good. We have also completed installation of the transit shelters around Murfreesboro. You may have seen them along Marion Streets that we put in place where we had the highest ridership and pickup locations. And we've also completed, just completed, the automated vehicle location system that we have in our buses now, where that they can be tracked, and we can track some performance. And we've also made it where this would be available to the public for use, like on smartphones or whatever, just standing on the side of the road, you can actually pull it up, see where your bus is. So that, I think, is a big help to the public. And some of our goals for FY15 the coming year would be to modify our system operations. This is a big move that we're looking at making from a 30-minute trip time to a window of 45 minutes. We've had to do this for a number of reasons. One of the main reasons certainly is we operate in the same traffic everyone else does. Traffic continues to increase, and we'll talk about that later. But that has been an issue we've dealt with, and to some degree, we're a victim of our own success. The more passengers we pick up, the more times it takes to load and unload folks, and that does drag down the travel times somewhat as well. So we will be making that change this year, hopefully this fall. A lot of work is involved in doing that. And we've really got a good staff that helps put these things together for us. And just like this past year, we always conduct a passenger appreciation day and free fare day. That's been very popular. We try to use that to introduce people that may not have been riding the bus to Rover and provide them with an opportunity to experience the trip. We're also working this year to complete the environmental study and the preliminary engineering for our new transit facility. That's a pretty large undertaking. It is. Project's going to take several years, and we're looking at hopefully getting the environmental clearance from the Federal Transit Administration by spring of next year. And we will then move into right-of-way acquisition and final engineering and also the construction. And so we're kind of shooting for a timeframe of mid-2018 on that. And let's see, moving on to the traffic section, there is a small increase in our traffic budget of about 130,000, and that's primarily due to personnel-related expenditures, as well as having picked up a line item called traffic control devices that was inadvertently left out of last year's budget with a changeover. So that part of the budget is approximately $900,000 this year. Looking at some of the accomplishments, there's been a lot of work put toward several initiatives from last year. We have retrofitted all the signalized intersections in the CBD to replace the incandescent light bulbs with LEDs. And we've completed replacement of the CBD pedestrian signals with countdown pedestrian signal indicators. And I don't know if you've noticed that, that replaced the old walk and don't walk with the ones that actually count down from 15, 14, 13, so forth, to provide pedestrians information on how much longer that they actually have in their crossing. This is a good piece of technology that really helps convey a message more than the old walk and don't walk signs, because a lot of people just really didn't know what that meant. We have retrofitted five intersections in the CBD to add pedestrian signals. They were locations in more of the periphery of the CBD that, when built in the 90s, didn't include pedestrian signals, but those have been added to them. And we have completed prioritization to retrofit signalized intersections around town to include pedestrian signals. A lot of these signals have been around for years. In fact, we have 138 signalized intersections in Murfreesboro. That's using, using my trivia question to groups. But in, in those, we only have 41 out of the whole 138 that actually are outfitted with pedestrian signals, or only approximately 30%. We realize that in a change of times and noticing that people are more mobile and more different ways now, that we feel like from a safety and accommodation standpoint, that this is really something that ought to be added. And we have made accommodations to try to prioritize how we go about and what are our most high priority locations and how we go about actually getting to the point of looking at the most critical locations and getting those retrofitted. We've also begun design of the Lott Street relocation project. As you're aware, that's something that we're doing simultaneous with the Broad Memorial Project, and that will be, some issues associated with that will be coming back to council in the near future. And we've also continued the preliminary engineering on Bradville Pike and Cherry Lane Extension Project. These are both getting close to a point where we hope to have the environmental studies and so forth approved in the near future. Excuse me. Some of our FY15 goals would, one of our big undertakings with several different departments would be beginning of the comprehensive plan, which includes an update to the city's major thoroughfare plan. Instead of being just totally a roadway and plan update, this will be a more broad-based transportation plan, which will include more multimodal aspects such as pedestrians and bicycle and so forth. And we, as I mentioned, will continue our retrofit of the intersections to include a PED signals, and we will continue to move forward to replace the incandescent lamps with LEDs signals. Those are actually about a 90% savings on the electrical cost. So that, and that's something that's really helped us out, it's been more reliable, has been less time on the street changing light bulbs. So that is a good thing. And we're also moving forward with the, building the construction of Phase 4A of Stone Hill Greenway in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department, Engineering Department, and so forth. And I would be glad at this point to answer any questions you may have about our initiatives or the budget itself.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson, where are you, where is your new Rover transportation center to be located?
We are, we are looking right now at several parcels that would be at the corner of Ridge Avenue and Main Street, across the street from the street department.
Sarah?
I attended your passenger appreciation day. I intended to stop by about 15 minutes. He ended up staying about two hours.
Great.
And I was really impressed. I was impressed that you all had a lot of food, and people just off the street were stopping, and some of them were homeless and asked if they take food with them, and some even asked if they take food home to their kids. And you all, you were very gracious, and I was very impressed with that. I was also impressed, one of your buses was having problems, and they said, "Hey, Dana, we got a problem." You know, I don't know the guy's name, but he was one of your drivers, I think. So he left and actually fixed the bus. And they said that he was really good at that, so I was very impressed with that. I got to meet a lot of the passengers that, you know, ride Rover on a day-to-day basis. And a lot of them were asking the question, "What about weekend service?" I just asked, "What did you like about Rover? How can we improve Rover?" And that seemed to have been over half the people was asking, "Could we at least extend it to Saturdays? So have you ever thought about maybe doing a pilot program just to see what the cost would be and how many people would actually use it on Saturday?"
We have discussed that. In fact, the two most prevalent requests are weekend service...
So have you ever thought about maybe doing a pilot program just to see what the cost would be and how many people would actually use it on Saturday?
We have discussed that. In fact, the two most prevalent requests are weekend service and the extension past the six PM time that we stop now providing service. I think that there would be a large demand for it. And if we do move forward in doing something, that's something that the council would have to consider from a budgetary standpoint, is it would be a huge structural change from a staff perspective in accommodating that, because right now, we use a combination of full-time and part-time drivers. And certainly with the days of the week being the five and the full-time people we have even in the supervisory staff position, then we would have to have some way to fill the supervisory staff or gap on the weekend. And we would have to change the structure of how we work within the full-time drivers and the part-time and have to hire more to fill those slots. So certainly if we do, if the council is interested in doing and speaking with Mr. Lyons about this, then we would, you know, we could move forward to set something up. But it would be a large programmatic change to do that.
Maybe in the future, as more money comes in, we can look at that. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, I know you say you're looking to the future. Have we started looking at a monorail system yet?
I don't know that the city of Murfreesboro's got there yet. I know that the Department of Transportation is in the process at Senator Kettering's behest of reporting back to the Senate and doing the study about the monorail. So that would be interesting to see what the results of that.
We may very well just be tied it in.
Well, we, I mean, we, not a monorail, but certainly we do very closely tie in and coordinate our regional bus system, the Relax and Ride, the RTA, and our local system. If you notice, not the express trips that are the AM, PM, but the midday trips. If you go up to our transit hub at the corner of Walnut Burton, you'll see the big Relax and Ride, large buses pull up from Nashville. We have people that get on and off the Rover buses and make those transfers. Somebody may come from the south part of town, come up to the hub, get on the regional bus, go to Nashville, and then come back and do the same thing in reverse. So we try very hard to coordinate the timings. Those work well, a lot of use.
And have they adjusted the routes on the Relax and Ride? Because I've noticed that some of the drop-off points seem to have improved as far as where they were dropping them off on Broad and Northfield. They, now they're going around on Northfield, dropping them off rather than dropping them off on Broad Street, which is what appears to be a much safer drop-off point.
A lot of it is the way they drop off as opposed to the routes and stuff. In fact, the issues about the drop-offs and where people are actually parking is one of the big initiatives we're working on with RTA right now to look at the possibilities if we continue the expanded system to have more formal, more formalized parking ride lots. Right now, we're just doing this and using some private businesses that have been gracious enough to let the public park there like the Krogers and use the service. So if we do a more formal parking ride lot that would attract a lot of people, then it would be a whole lot easier to coordinate the ingress and egress with that. We're also working with the Department of Transportation to make a modification to the parking ride lot at eight forty in Norquist Broad as we speak. There's some issues with that that cause us some concerns that we're looking to work with TDOT and some of their safety funding to rectify.
Thank you.
When we're looking at the comprehensive plan, and I heard you allude to this, but on WGNS the other morning, I forget how many phone calls that we received, but a large portion were about crosswalks and information that you just brought out. So can you explain to us with a comprehensive plan in coinciding that with the major thoroughfare plan and our bike plan and Greenway plan? How will all of those come together where we look at, you know, how we move forward being pedestrian-friendly in Murfreesboro?
Well, and I think a lot of that is not only the replanning of some stuff, but it is the consolidation and the integration of some of our existing plans. For instance, we just got through adopting the Bike Way, Greenway, and Blue Way Master Plan. There was a lot of comprehensive work put in the sidewalks and the bicycle elements of those plans that we want to look at in conjunction with the roadway element of the update of the thoroughfare plan and basically meld those all together to where that the streets that we may be proposing also consider the pedestrians more so and the bicyclists than maybe sometimes they have in the past. So that will be a large undertaking. We really look forward to getting involved in that. And we, and I just wanted to mention one other thing, too, is that we do have, and it may not seem like it, but we do have probably one of the larger comprehensive bike networks, and it's not, it's a maturing network, is that we are filling in gaps with pieces and we have probably more bike lanes than most any county in middle Tennessee does. So that's something that we build upon the opportunities. As an example, Memorial Boulevard is being paved by the Department of Transportation this summer, I mean, starting in July, from basically a little bit south of Northfield Boulevard all the way out to the VA. In that project, Mr. Valchon has done a lot of work in providing TDOT some of the design help, and we're actually incorporating bike lanes with the repaving. You have to be very opportunistic, just like we did with the section of Thompson Lane several years ago, where we put bike lanes in with the repaving of that section from O'Fort Parkway down to Broad Street. And we're looking to do the same thing. So when opportunities present themselves, we go backwards to the plans and say, this is what we want to do, and then work with others to actually implement it.
On the Rover ridership, I assume that's a number of trips. Is that right?
That's correct.
Do we have any way to measure how many residents are using the service? I mean, what the raw number of people?
No, I mean, we don't have it broken down in a manner to where we can individualize it, i.e. how many people out of the two-hundred-and-sixty are the repeat customers or not. I would suggest that probably a pretty good percentage of that are repeat riders or as they are on most, all public transportation systems.
There's no kind of membership or, I mean, you know, swipe card or something like that?
Well, when, not at this time, one of the things that we are, one of our next little projects that we're wanting to endeavor on is the changing over to some electronic fares, have the ability to pay fares electronically, whether by credit cards, debit cards, or even prepaid passes, to where you could go and have a card loaded, swipe that, and not have to handle cash or come down to City Hall to buy tickets, books of tickets, and then use those. So that would give us, I think, a better ability to really track some of the users by the issuance of some of those things.
I think that would be a good thing to look towards down the road.
Certainly, it's, quite frankly, a whole lot better convenience for the customers as well.
And I'm delighted at the comments you made a while ago talking about the improvement to the Memorial Boulevard, because we've got a big-box retail outlet vendor going up out there. And in doing so, there had been a lot of concern expressed about the fact that there's no sidewalks along a great deal of that stretch of road. And I think that'll dramatically improve the pedestrian friendliness, not only from just the bike lanes, but for having a, basically a right-of-way for people to be able to walk down almost a sidewalk that will help keep traffic up off them where they can walk down the side of the road maybe. But the, I think that'll be a tremendous help, a problem that was going to present itself as soon as that store got opened up, so.
In that particular project, we paid a lot of attention to those things. In fact, part of the design was a pull-off for the bus in front of Walmart. So there would be an inset to where Rover would pull over and actually get out the traffic flow. The other part of that was that the existing traffic signal on Airport Road, we will have pedestrian signals added to that with the walk-and-don't-walk. And as you're aware, that there were actually an additional signal being installed with the Walmart project that they're installing, and we require that be able to accommodate pedestrians as well. And of course, we required, as we would any developer, for Walmart putting sidewalks as a condition approved of the site plan.
And the sidewalks really will take care of the area right there on their property, but when you go beyond that, they're really, even across, well, across Forts Conde, there is, but across State Farm's property, there's no sidewalks. And going out towards Osborne Lane, there's no sidewalks out there. So just a bike lane will help certainly the ability of people to navigate up and down the side of the road.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? Mr. Richardson, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the Urban Environmental Department. That's on page one forty-four. Ms. Holloway, and I, Ms. Holloway, I guess we'll be doing Civic Plaza as well.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm here this evening to present both budgets. But before I get started, I wanted to say thank you very much for the support of the council over the years. I think you've helped made, make Urban Environmental what it is today. And I want to stop and thank all the other departments. I know I don't say thank you enough, but from administration to all the other department heads and everybody that we work with every day, they are such a part of what we do. They're all professionals. And as you know, we maintain over fifty properties. Excuse me. Many of those, police, fire halls, those types of things, their input, their helpfulness has just, it's, I'm so grateful for it. And again, thank you, all the department heads and all the people that we work with. I just don't thank them enough, but I just wanted to make sure and thank them this evening. As you know, I think we have one of the best departments. The Urban Environmental Department continues to either meet or exceed its goals, and that's through the hard efforts of our employees. They truly are ready and willing to work anytime, any day, any hour. You may know, they do come in, the staff, most of the crews, at 5:00 AM on Friday, and it's not unusual for us to be working through the night like our tree crew with storm damage. And we also maintain the Civic Plaza, and we coordinate all the events on the plaza. So for instance, they may come in at three o'clock in the morning to help staff an event there. So we truly are a team that pulls together and works very diligently. They're very skilled professionals, and I think that shows in what it's done for our city in improving the safety and the quality of life here. And it continues, and I really appreciate their efforts, all of them. Our department coordinator is wonderful, our landscape specialist, our tree crew is there at a moment's call, and our mowing and landscape maintenance staff, like I said, they're professionals in what they do, and we continue to strive on customer service and provide the best that there is. Looking at the Urban Environmental Department budget, let me get back to the Urban Environmental There is a slight decrease in the Urban Environmental Department budget, and some of those I'd just like to point out, because I think I have a lot of experience with older vehicles under operations and maintenance. I think it shows that through your support, and we've been able to add some new vehicles over the last few years, and it's just common sense that newer vehicles are less expensive to maintain, and our newer vehicles are more fuel-efficient. So we have some decreases there. So overall, we do have a slight decrease in there. We are asking to add a storage facility because we've kind of outgrown our operations building, and that'll really, we already have the existing pad that was poured when we actually built the Urban Environmental Department, so that cost is, is not, it's already built in. And we want to utilize that space so that we can store some more vehicles and equipment into our operations building. Looking at some of our department goals, we continue to work on the downtown tree replacement. I think that's very important. It's very important to the businesses, the quality of life, and the citizens. That's an ongoing project that we just completed. Guarding in the city, that's something that we've talked about for a long time, and we've really upped our game there. I want to stop and thank the Communications Department and all the people that we work with. They've helped make us look good on the air, which, and they've done just a fantastic job with that. I hope you all have seen that. The public has responded so positively to that, to all those episodes. The last one was a twenty-minute episode, and we got a lot of response from that, from the public. We try to do a mix of educational, horticultural tips and those types of things, bringing on professionals from outside, talking about, you know, the current diseases and insect damage to look out for and those types of things, how to properly plant trees. So it's an ongoing kind of educational program that's fun to do, and it's been great working with everybody on that project. Our community landscape awards, that's our community outreach. We're really upping our game there, almost tripling the number of awards that we've been giving out. We traditionally will do May, June, July, and August, because that seems to be the prime time for most people's lawns and landscaping to look its best. The May recipients will be announced very soon. We are using the social networks and the webpage to get that kind of information out, to show the public, and to give them their appreciation that they deserve. And we continue with our educational programs. Already this year, we've done two large tree giveaways. We do Arbor Day at, for third and fourth graders. We tried to go, we've just been doing this, it's our second year, so we're trying to hit every school for third and fourth graders. And this year, I think we gave out five hundred trees, and then we did the Adventures in Agriculture, and that's a huge outpouring of people there, and we gave out probably a thousand tree seedlings there as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the Urban Environmental Department budget at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway.
Ms. Holloway, first impressions are very important. And when our visitors and our guests and our business people come through Murfreesboro, they see your handiwork. They see what you do at the Oaklands and at the Discovery Center, and our flower beds and our medians that are well-kept, even though we hear complaints about Medical Center sometime about too many trees. But all of these things make the quality of life, they add to the quality of life, and I appreciate what your people do. Most of the work is done early in the morning and late in the afternoon, is not seen by the public.
That's true.
I just think that Mr., the Parks and Recreation Commissioner thinks we live in his park, but I think we live in your garden.
Thank you.
Doug, and to follow up on that a little bit, I think we've got a little vision I serve on the board with Urban Environmental. And I think we're looking at, hopefully, maybe coming up with, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're trying to come up with a idea where we might come up with some signage or something that welcomes people to Murfreesboro with more of a brand or a, more of a logo that would be recognized as when you come into Murfreesboro more than just a steel sign on the side of the road that says, "Welcome to Murfreesboro," that may be at three or four locations in Murfreesboro, perhaps the airport with the project that we've got going on out there, it'd be a good starting point. But we, maybe with a small cannon incorporated into it and some rock work and some signage and some, some beautiful flowers and stuff that Urban Environmental would be responsible for maintaining. But, but something that would give the town a little more of a comfortable feel when you come into it, that you'd recognize, now I'm in Murfreesboro. And I think that's something that we're trying to look at, and I don't know if we've got it in the budget right now, but something we need to work with the street sign, or sign department, I guess, on and see if we can't, not that there aren't enough people already coming to Murfreesboro, but something that may be more of a pleasant view. already coming to Murfreesboro, but something that may be more of a pleasant view when you enter the city limits of Murfreesboro.
That's right. We really are, that's a really big goal of ours. I won't call it branding, but we really envision maybe some stonework. Of course, I know traffic and right-of-way, and we'll have to take all that into consideration. But something that designates our gateways and our entrances into the city, like Councilman Smotherman said, that sort of identifies us, and some of these corridors, trying to tie that together.
I've got one other thing.
Sure.
Ms. Holloway, I know this is, that you maintain the Civic Plaza, but I would challenge staff and all the department heads and Ms. McGannon to figure out how we could better utilize our beautiful Civic Plaza. It's not used, but 3% of the town?
A great asset, and we would love to see it better utilized. Is there any more folks?
It's funny you say that. We had a meeting this morning with Gloria Christie, and Uncle Dave making days is coming up. And the conversation was, we're sitting, looking over the plaza, and about how one of these days, talking about Uncle Dave making more of a festival and having different locations through our community, and brought up the Civic Plaza because we have a natural amphitheater that's there, and there's all kinds of different things that we may could, you know, look at incorporating. Yeah. Yeah. You've got a swimming pool there, cold water challenge. Ms. Holloway, the one thing I would like to, and I don't think anyone who drives through Murfreesboro could look and say that we do not take care of the community, and you drive through and you see the men and women who are working on the crews. The thing I think that we have to be mindful of, and I noticed this coming down Thompson Lane the other day, that, you know, we have our curb, we have our grass strip, and then we have our sidewalk. And we have street trees that are in between our curb and our sidewalk. And now those street trees, when they're planted, they look beautiful. But now that they're getting bigger, I'm sure Mr. Hillis will say they're tough to keep in the right-of-way. And so I don't know how, I know that a lot of that's landscape architects that are presenting projects, but if we could be mindful that our street trees, although I think they are very nice, that when we start seeing street trees that end up looking like an L shape or a reverse R where trucks are drilling them going down the road, that we may want to rethink that sometime. And I know we've gone back and forth on that.
And I totally agree. I do. And, you know, the past is a great lesson. In looking forward, you know, we're talking about things like landscape easements to get those trees, you know, pushed back even further. We did a great job at the avenue. There's a lot of forethought there by getting a larger right-of-way. But of course, then, you know, more land, more money, that sort of thing. So it's sort of a push-me, pull-me right there, but you're absolutely right. And there's areas where honestly, I think we're overplanted. So, you know, we're stepping back and looking at that and learning from some of our mistakes that we've made in the past. So I appreciate your comment, and we're aware of it, too.
Yeah, I think you bring a good point because I, you know, I hear comments that, "Man, you guys have some beautiful-looking buildings if we could only see them through the landscaping." And I think we're, it's a give and take.
It is, and I will tell you that one of the efforts that we're really making is sitting down more on the front end with the design teams and explaining to them and showing them. Now, you know, I work with a lot of engineers. Sometimes they think very linearly, or however you say that word, straight lines. And, but when we're working with people that understand, our landscape specialists is sitting down and we're actually encouraging the new developments to space their trees, you know, differently for view sheds and to, you know, anything that we can do to help them get that visibility. So we're being very proactive on that end, working with the design teams and the developers to try and show them that, you know, you can cluster your trees and give better visibility. And to think about the future, many times these plans don't have signs located on them yet, and that's kind of frustrating also. They don't know, and then sure enough, just as soon as, you know, at the end of the day, after the fact, they place their sign, sometimes after they put the landscaping in, so.
Sure. That's a great segue into the Civic Plaza.
Yes. Civic Plaza, there's not a lot of changes there. So again, you see a little bit of reduction in vehicles and machinery. That's due to using newer equipment. Let's see. We do have an increase, but if Mr. Hillis will remember, if he's still here, and, oh, there you are. Part of that is, we suspended it last year, but we've added it back in, and that's a $10,000. And I believe, Raymond, is this our last year that we're going, this our last phase of that? But that's for the Civic Plaza to do renovation on the pathways and the stairways. And this will be the last renovation. We've done it over two to three years, and we've put $10,000 in. Again, we suspended that last year due to cuts to the budget, but we're going to try to finish that up. And thank you to Mr. Hillis for all of his efforts there. There are uneven paths and sinking and some things. The rise and run has gotten off on some of those, making it very difficult for people, you know, small people and others that have to almost climb up some of those stairs. But he did a fabulous job on it, and I know he'll do a fabulous job again. So, any questions?
Any questions on the Civic Plaza? Thank you so much, Ms. Holloway. Thank you. Please relate to your staff, the job that they're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the parking garage.
Mayor, I think I'll take the next two. Your parking garage budget is roughly split, two-thirds city, one-third county. And most all of the expense in this budget is for lighting of the parking garage. We also have some sweeping services to clean the garage, so be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Lyons, I know this is a wish list thing, but looking at revised lighting in our parking garage would greatly cut the, I did this in my buildings, and my electricity reduction is down about 22%.
The move to a more efficient light is one of the things we want to take a look at. We have vendors who do approach the city to do a retrofit, and this will be one of the first places that we're going to go with that.
Okay.
And it should almost read parking garage slash tornado shelter because during the last tornado warnings, I showed up down there to see what really went on. It's amazing how many people use that as their refuge in the storm. And it's obviously a safe place, and I think the people who use it for that enjoy seeing each other during the storm. So, and I think that perhaps we've got some people who are a little bit shaky from the past, and I may be one of them. I was there. But certainly, it's well-used.
Mr. Lyons, I think it'd be good to, I know Mr. Whitaker and his staff do a lot of work on the parking garage, and it oversaw, I think, all the change out in the lights several years ago, so it's a team effort. All right, any questions on the parking garage? All right, we'll move to non-departmental on page 202.
Sure. This is a place where we house some expenditures that do not neatly fit elsewhere in the budget. We've got a reserve for uncollected taxes. We project about 2% of our taxes will be uncollected, so we'll park that amount here. One of the significant decreases in this year's budget was the decrease in the adjustment allowances on delinquent taxes. This is the appeals that we saw last year really ramp up. That has since settled down, so we're recommending $200,000 in that line item. Your unforeseen contingencies, like your financial policies, call for amendment of $500,000 per year. We did increase that somewhat this year. We know with the rolling out of the IT master plan with the software for finance and human resources, there may be things that occur with that project that we may need to tackle as well as the classification and compensation plan. So we wanted to be a little bit forward-thinking and put some additional funds in that as well. The health and wellness incentive, $273,000. This is what I actually get credited back to the various departments as that wellness credit is earned, but we centrally budgeted it here. And then this was a reappraisal year, and that is the city's share of the reappraisal cost at $456,000 and change. Be happy to answer any questions.
How much is important, you're saying?
We've got $1,035,000.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move to human resources. Page 83. Mr. Gallois, I'm glad it was you when I looked up.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Mayor and members of Murfreesboro City Council, I am delighted to present the Human Resources Department FY15 budget on behalf of my team. Prior to doing so, I'm reminded that this year in 2014 commemorates the 50th anniversary of the passage of Title VII of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. So I believe it's very fitting and appropriate with legislation that's so important to our country and to our city, obviously, that I'm able to present. As you might know, our department mission is designed around serving those who serve, although small in number, with a team of nine individuals. Our capacity to serve is quite large. The human resources budget information, as Mayor pointed out, is found on page 83. This year, we will again focus on aligning our key priorities with city council and city administration's strategic priorities. And as Mr. Lyons has already mentioned in his remarks, classification and compensation study, an update to the software systems for the very important work of generating payroll and operating our benefits administration systems is well underway. I might take this opportunity to thank Ms. Tucker for her excellent work in working with a group of city departments in making sure that we brought this plan to city council in terms of the proposal for those services. Nine staff, as I mentioned, are assigned to work in human resources, and there is no increase in staffing in this year's proposed budget. I might mention some highlights of our accomplishments from last year, including thanks to your work last year as a city council, the realignment and reporting of our human resources responsibilities with respect to benefits administration. And part of that was evidenced last evening with Ms. Russell's ability to work so closely and carefully with our consultants from Cowan. So kudos to Ms. Russell for her work in presenting this year's insurance budget as proposed last evening. In addition, those highlights include the procurement of services for Cowan benefits that would result, as Mr. Lyons pointed out last night, in almost $800,000 in network savings as presented in the carrier change going from Health Scope Benefits to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee. And I know a number of city employees are going to be very excited about that change in terms of that network and the services that were provided back before 2011. The department also produced another version of the hidden paycheck, which is in fact a total rewards and total compensation statement. On average, we're proud again this past year to communicate to our city employees that the values of those benefits as a total reward was approximately 51% of base annual budgeted salary. I'm also pleased to report that the department compared very favorably with our nine peer cities that were reported on page 264 and 5 of your budget report, as indicated by MTS. For example, our department leads peer cities in the ability to efficiently process employment applications, and quite importantly, is third lowest in overall cost among our peers in the comparison cities, well under $1,000 per full-time equivalent. In other words, there's a lot going on behind the scenes with respect to who is trying to come to work for the city and that talent that finds its way here, that we nourish and develop over the years and later on see at retirement. And yes, I can tell you that an absolute joy of my month is meeting with a retiree and their spouse. We do that almost 30 times a year. So we're very proud to reflect on those benchmarks, and I, Mr. Crumley, have some remarks prepared later on in the presentation, but I thought it was worth pointing out that we feel very proud of our metrics. For this budget year, there are three items that account for about 90% of the budget increase. You will note that one of those items has to do with a maintenance agreement for the software that is proposed for purchase. In effect, this will change the way that we do work in the Human Resources Department in terms of looking at data, helping our internal customers with information as it relates to either benefits or payroll, of course, or human resources services. In addition, there's funding requested for a public safety job analysis by the Center for Organizational and Human Resources Effectiveness at MTSU. This study would provide city administration, human resources, and legal departments with key and crucial information about the ability to understand the components of our physical abilities test requirements, specifically for police officers and firefighters. This budget also includes initial funding for an employee service award program citywide. You might recall that there are service award programs in place, have been for a number of years, in both the police and fire departments. It's our intent, for the first time, to expand that service to all city employees and recognize milestones from five up to 40 years. Incidentally, we were very proud to see firefighter Billy Vincent receive his 40-year department award this past year. But in essence, this proposal would affect all city employees. And so in the transition year, it's key to get everything right in terms of recognizing the proper milestones and the recurring years of service awards. And last but not least, a copier printer is being requested that will show 19% ROI and a full payback of 5.16 years. But more importantly, this particular style of equipment will help to satisfy the requirements associated with HIPAA and protected health information that sometimes comes to us in the form of family medical evac requests and additional medical information. So we feel very importantly about that particular request. As mentioned, the department will play an important role in the implementation of the new software applications with multiple departments, including finance and tax and judicial and information technology. So the way we are about to do work again is very different in the next fiscal year. We're very excited about the potential to work with those process changes and the implementation for those software packages. With that, I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time concerning the Human Resources Department budget.
Any questions?
Mayor, much just, much like the finance department, which is undergoing a remodel and new software, you know, I really want to emphasize, you know, the importance of new software in human resources that's going to affect all of our employees and timesheets and payroll, as well as the new classification and compensation plan. So that staff of nine has got a big challenge ahead of them, and I know they're up to it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallois.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move to debt service fund, page 206.
Mayor, if you'll give me a second to get us fired up with pretty pictures here.
While you're getting that going, I think that we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Take a second. That's a good idea.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll call, come out of recess and turn it back over to Mr. Crumley, who's going to go over the Debt Service Fund, page 206 in your program.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to cover the next four on your agenda tonight, starting with Debt Service on 206. And if we can swap over to the computer screen, get some graphics on the board. Probably easier to see this than it is for me to tell you this. Let me fix that. On the screen is a representation of the general obligation debt of the city for the past decade. What we're proposing in the FY15 bar, that orange bar there on the end, is a $39 million debt issuance during fiscal year 15. That would increase the city's net debt by about $12 million over the year. Currently, we stand at around $220 million. This proposed $39 million would move us to about $232 million. I think this may be my favorite slide in the entire budget. If you'll turn to page 214, in the very low right-hand corner, you can see that the Debt Service Fund for FY15 has decreased $1.1 million, with the general fund benefiting almost to the tune of $700,000 in that number. But this is the representation of the city's annual debt service out until all bonds are paid off. You can see in each of the next two years, there are significant drops in the annual debt service. Then there are two flat years. That's representative of us having shifted so much of our debt into five-year obligations. What you see there is about a five-year bench, and then you see very sharp drop-offs after that, when the five-year debt that we've used to purchase capital equipment is repaid. This is a very, very positive graph. I mean, this, when I look at it, gives me hope for budgets in the future. This pie chart of how your debt service, how your bonds have been used, has also changed significantly from last year to this year. The green pie is the school system, and that pie has increased by 6% from year to year and reflects the $20 million borrowed for overall Creek Elementary School and a little over $5 million borrowed for the technology program that the schools have implemented. Now we get into our benchmarking in our financial policies in terms of where we stand with debt. I'll refer you to page 212 in your budget. You can see the calculation there of both FY14 and FY15, the percentage of the net debt allowed by the charter that the city is using. Both of those are right around 54%. We don't see that number increasing significantly in the next few years. Because of property reappraisal, the policy limit that concerns debt to the actual value of property has declined. Through the reappraisal process, the total worth of real estate in the city has increased. Debt did not increase nearly so fast, and so you see a significant drop in that blue bar on the right-hand side, which is FY15. Our debt per capita has increased slightly. The benchmark here is $2,600 per person. We're at about $2,100 per person. The good news is also that our general service, the debt service portion of the general fund budget has decreased. One of the concerns of the bond rating agencies has always been the very high percentage of the general fund budget that goes towards debt, our very rapid repayment policy of over 90% of the bonds repaid in a 10-year period. All of those things that have made debt service up to 24% of the budget. We're starting to see that turn and go the other way. This year, for FY15, debt looks to be about 19% of the general fund budget. And that is it for the slide presentation. If you have questions about the Debt Service budget, I'd be glad to try to answer them. The next budget works kind of in coordination with, and actually, the next two on your agenda work in coordination with Debt Service.
Okay. Let's see if we have any questions on the Debt Service Fund.
I should say that the $39 million is not fully representative of projects at this point. We know we will need to borrow money for the renovation at 1004 Highland Avenue during the next 12 months. Our estimate from the architect ranges between $22 and $25 million for the renovation of a new police department headquarters. That is a part of that $39 million. But the balance of those dollars, we looked at what the city has been borrowing, both fixed and variable, over the last few years, and we added $10 million in fixed and $4 million in variable. There are no specific projects attached to those dollars at this time. As we go into the fall of the year, we'll be going back through the departments to refresh the capital improvement program and then be presenting that to you sometime in the fall of the year for your approval. Only then will we actually set what the borrowing for 2015 might be. These are all projected numbers at this point.
So really, what we're looking is the estimate that we have for the North Highland Building, which we have committed as far as, since we purchased the product, or the property in December of last year. But everything else is more of just a budget that we have.
We had previously borrowed $6.4 million for Highland Avenue. The purchase price was $4.8, which leaves us enough money for what we believe the interior demolition and the initial architect's fees are going to be. Still leaves us short the actual renovation cost, which, right now, the architects only can give us a range, 22 to 25.
Okay. Mr. Lyons?
Is there an easy reason why the debt per capita rose?
I'm kind of a stickler about numbers, and so I use our latest census number, which is a little over $110,000. The information that came out later last week after we'd prepared this for the budget document indicated, you know, from the Census Bureau, that population in town had grown to 117,000. I've not run those figures at 117,000, but I'm assuming that that will pull it back. Maybe not all the way to where we were in 2014, but it'll pull it back significantly.
Any demographic reasons why it might be? I mean, is that a, that'd be a...
I can't really offer anything other than that, Councilman. It is a pure divide the debt by the number of people living in town.
Jim, would it be safe to say that most of this $39 million is brick and mortar and land acquisition, though?
For sure, the $25 million that I think we'll need to renovate Highland Avenue is going to be a brick and mortar project. I really don't know how to hang labels on the next $10 million that we're proposing would be a fixed-rate issue. The $4 million for variable rate is likely to be your equipment load, your police cars. Computers will still be an important topic, but we really have not attached a specific project to that $10 million that's projected to be in the fixed-rate issue.
Any other questions?
Okay, if you look behind your tab that says Capital Projects Funds...
Mr. Crumley, I do think it is, it would be good to point out that, I think, for the first time in the city's history, that we have hit $3 billion with a B assets in the city. You know, we were 2.8 last year, and now we've hit $3,24 million.
I think it's very impressive that despite the difficult economic time that everyone experienced, 2008 to 2012, the city held its value and has now grown in value. The reappraisal, I think, was somewhat of a pleasant surprise for all of us, and of course, because of that reappraisal, you'll be considering a certified tax rate that is lower than the current tax rate.
I thought it'd be good to point that out. Okay, we'll move to...
Capital Improvement Fund on 225. There's only $8,100 in this fund, and that's the remnants of a signed Wayfair grant that still hasn't been spent. Then on pages 228 through 230 is the TMBF and the Bond Fund. You bring your, you actually repay your debt in that Debt Service Fund. This is the fund where those dollars are then expended. We're projecting a different number here for new money coming in in the 2015 bond issue. Melissa shaking her head.
Actually, the Capital Improvement Contingency Fund is what Chris Griffith alluded to earlier. We lifted those road projects out of this fund and put them in the Engineering Department this year because the state said we can't loan money to other funds until they get their grant reimbursement. So we've moved those projects into engineering for just the grant side. The local portion side still is in our borrowed money. So this fund is not as active without those road projects.
Right. We're down to $8,100 in that Capital Improvement and Contingency Fund. On page 230 is the Bond Fund. The annual debt service payments go through the Debt Service Account that we previously reviewed. The expenditures for those projects pass through this account. And again, here, beyond the Police Department Headquarters project, there are several others listed on pages 228 and 229, some of which you've approved in the past and are included in borrowing that has already been completed, others that we'll be borrowing for in future time periods after you've reviewed the CIP.
Okay, would you have any questions?
Last but not least, on page 141 is the Gateway Fund. Gateway Department has been consolidated into the General Fund. It is now just a department. There is a $30,000 placeholder number there, just in case we would need to spend some money on surveys or engineering for a potential land sale. Nothing planned there. That is just a placeholder number, same as in previous years.
Any questions on the Gateway Department? Okay, we'll move to the Senior Citizens Department on page 167.
Welcome, our first-time presenting new director.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I do appreciate coming forth for the first time to present the budget for the senior citizen program here at St. Clair Street Senior Center for 2014-15 years. One of the things that I want to always impress is that we're taking care of the oldest of our citizens here in the city. And looking at the last year, we had a little over 3,258 seniors that walked through our doors on a daily basis for the year, and we looked at a little over 140-something thousand units of services that we were able to provide. With that, we have 19 staff folks, between full-time and part-time, making sure that those services are prepared and given out to our citizens. We look at our budget for this year, and we notice that we have some decreases in a few areas due to us receiving and getting new vans last year, so hopefully we will have some decreases in that area. We do have an increase in an area of activity programming that we have requested. We're seeing the need for some service increases in some of the programs. We did have, with losing our past director and a couple other staff members that retired and moved on, we had some training issues that they were trained for and that we would now have to make sure in the upcoming year that we had some retraining for some programs that we have in place already. We also would like to introduce some evidence-based programming. The state is looking into making sure that all senior centers across the state are providing, and I think that will be a great opportunity as the city to make sure that our staff is ready to produce those programs through our senior center. Other things that we want to highlight, accomplishments that we are working on, we have, between the commission and our staff, have been truly working hard on accreditation. This is a national accreditation for senior centers across the United States. We will be one in the state of Tennessee that will become accredited before Christmas. August is our deadline to put that paperwork in place. We have been working with the staff. In fact, I have Diane Smith, who is our program coordinator, I have to give kudos to her because in the interim of becoming the new director, she did work quite heavily on this budget and making sure that it was in place, and working quite heavily on making sure our accreditation process is in place for the upcoming year. So we're really proud of all of her work and all the staff and the commission's hard work for that. One thing that I also want to notice to you is, when you're looking through the programs, we are really trying to take a hard look at preventative-type plans for our older adults. As the wave of older citizens come into the programs, we're looking at those education opportunities, our physical fitness opportunities, that we can go ahead and try to keep those older adults more active, healthy, making sure that they understand their health issues, making sure that they have a place to come to to ask about their health issues, and have staff that is qualified and understanding what services are available to them. In fact, in this upcoming year, we're asking that we have a staff person that will be AIR certified. This is a national certification that they would be able to walk them through plans on being able to help them with their Medicare, their Part D, any type of insurance, the state plans that are out there. We had Dee Brown, which is one of our care providers there. She sat down and worked with an older adult this last week and was able to save him $2,400 a year. If we can do that for our older adults, just by giving them information and knowledge and walking them through the ways that they can save money, that is one reason why we are so important to the community. Is there any questions you have on the budget that I haven't or need to address?
Okay, we have any questions?
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment if I could. I always make too many comments, but our new director has hit the ground running, jumped in with both feet, and worked extremely hard. And as she highlighted, some of the programs that we do with the center, they benefit our older citizens, and I am eligible to go. But this accreditation is a big deal.
Yes, sir.
It's a real big deal, and we're about there. You say in December, maybe?
Well, we have the paperwork and everything finalized by August. That goes off to Washington, DC. They'll have some staff member, which would mean that we would have the certification and the certificate by December, probably. They will actually come here to visit us, go through the paperwork books from Washington.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmembers, I know that several of us were asked several months ago these questions, but, Mr. Lyons, if it would be possible, and I know it's probably too late for this budget, but if we could do some sort of research and study on what the senior property tax freeze that's similar to what the county does. We were all asked that on many different occasions, and Ms. Wright had sent us some good information on that, but in the upcoming months, if we could study that, please, and come back to the council with what the ramifications would be on the budget and even later on down the line, I think that would be something that we could, we could look at studying and come back with a recommendation.
Yes, sir. We'd be glad to.
We'd be glad to.
Glad to work with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, we'll move to the Public Golf Course Department and that's on page 178.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I'm excited to give you some information about the Golf Department, which consists of Old Fort Golf Club, the veterans golf course that we lease from the VA Hospital, and our new little short course that we've completed, Bloomfield Links. This year, we have addressed over 55,000 rounds at all the golf courses combined, even with the winter that we have being as cold as it was and we did have some grassing issues, but we still had a pretty good number as far as rounds total at all the golf courses. In the long run, we're...when we start looking at grass and stuff this time of the year, we're just hoping and praying and it's green when it comes out. And we did have a little bit of issue with grass, but in the overall scheme of things, when we're looking around at some of the other golf courses, I think we're at pretty high up on the list of how we came out. And Joel and his staff have done a great job. I know he was a little nervous and now that things have kind of gotten to a point now, he's pretty thankful for where we are with some of the stories that are out there. So, we're excited about that where we got some...we have some grass. So, we're in good shape. Some of the things to highlight, we're still continuing with our Frequent Player Program. An exciting few things that we have as far as engaging the community, some volunteer programs that we've started with our First Tee programs that we've conjunctioned with Nashville at our little Bloomfield course, some people there. We also had Bradley Elementary, their sixth-grade class came out last fall and worked about a half a day with us on the little course, doing some last-minute preparation and things that we did there. The people that are being able to use that, we're working closely with a new program coming up with the Boys and Girls Club. Also, the First Tee is, we've had a full first class and where your...the demand has been such that Nashville's wanting to sign up a second class there. They're also on Tuesdays, working with a group of our veterans from the VA Hospital for the rehab program and they're using our little course on Tuesday mornings, every Tuesday morning. Also, the KBD Foundation, a special needs group here in town, one of our golfers has a child in that and they have a group, they go around playing in tournaments and stuff and they've started using the course once a week and very excited and wanting to jump in and help us with that. Some of the accomplishments that we've had, we did host the USGA Junior Qualifier again last year for the...and we're signed up for this year for it to be our 26th year to host that event and that's a big one. The MTSU Ladies Collegiate Invitational, this will be the third year for that. I'm excited to announce, I had in my notes that we were in negotiation with the Southern Athletic Conference, but we've reached an agreement with them. They're going to have a fall preview tournament at Old Fort. Also, they're...in the spring, they're going to have their men's and women's golf championships here at Old Fort. So, that's eight schools with both men's and women's team. None of the teams are local. The nearest school is Swanee. So, they'll be coming from Atlanta and Mississippi, Arkansas, a lot of different places. So, we're excited to be able to have them coming into the community and spending several days with us and being able to get that one event allowed us to get this tournament in the fall and the same groups will be coming in for that, too. So, we're getting them twice. We're excited about that. It's our opportunity to shine because they're looking for a more centrally located permanent home and we'd love to be that for them. Some of the goals that we have for the year is obviously to try and help grow the game, always to increase participation and play and at the same time, offer the best value for the dollar that the citizens spend. We are excited to get our golf...the little golf course open and running. We're open in October for about three weeks. We've been open since early March, mid-March and got a couple of months under our belt. With school being out, we're looking for high participation there. And with that, I would like to invite you, on the 16th is going to be our grand opening and ribbon cutting for that facility. And Mr. Dennis Walters that is going to put on the golf show again for us. And if you have not seen that, I recommend that you come and see that whether you play or not. Mr. Walters has got paralyzed in a golf cart accident about 30 years ago from the waist down and he does all this show from a sitting position and it's pretty outstanding. And then after that, that day at Bloomfield, it'll be...we're going to have a free golf day for everyone that comes out that day that hadn't been able to see it to take a look at it. But excited about all the people that are taking advantage of that and the fact that we have some green grass to play on. And one other note that I'll...I won't go into it now, you can ask me about it later, but foot golf is on the horizon. I don't know if you've read much about that, but if you've played with Mr. McFarland, you've probably been exposed to it a little bit. It's actually a combination of soccer and golf and we're going to implement that at the VA Golf Course. And we've been working closely with the soccer community here and they're going to go in with us and implement that and it's pretty neat. It's golf rules, but using a soccer ball and a big hole. I'm sure some people want us to put that on for putting or whatever. So, we're excited about that. It's gone over pretty well. It's kind of sweeping across the country. So, it's going to be something new that we try. As far as in our budget numbers are pretty similar as to the past. We do have...we did have a survey done with Murfreesboro Electric Department concerning our heating and air units and some lighting. That's going to be in a project, I believe Mr. Crumley mentioned earlier with the...in the CIP project. It's an overall city project and we have a couple pieces of equipment that'll be also purchased under the CIP that'll be coming to you later. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Tracy, you said the Bloomfield Grand Opening would be the 16th. Is there a time?
Yeah, 11 o'clock. The golf show will start immediately following probably around 11:30 and free golf day right after that, somewhere around 1:00.
July or June?
June 16th, less than two weeks.
That's a Monday.
A Monday.
It's a Monday.
Okay. What time is that, Tracy?
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
We're having our first event there this weekend, Saturday, a parent-child event that I think is going to grow into something big. We got to get it out there, but we've got some parent and it's basically any parent, any child. So, we have some four and five-year-olds that are going to be playing and Mr. Wilkerson will be playing with his 50-year-old son. So, we're excited about that range. So, it's open to anybody. We're hoping to eventually get three and four generations playing together and enjoying time together. Sorry, Mr. McFarland, about the golf comment.
It's okay. I just want to...I'm impressed of how your dress has stepped up over the years.
That's the hardest thing about this year's budget is whether I'd pass dress code or not. You mentioned out in the hallway, my shoes match my belt, long sleeves and a tie. I'm good to go. I'm not wearing a jacket. It's too hot.
Darren's dream.
Yeah. We're just glad you're not wearing the spikes anymore, which that way doesn't match the color.
Well, it made me a little taller. Now that we have sauce spikes, it doesn't do me any good, so I'm here.
All right. Any questions for comedian Wilkins? All right, thank you so much, Tracy. All right, we'll move to the Airport Fund on page 215. And Chad, we're excited that you had the front page of our cover this year.
I was going to ask you to address the...really start out with the cover and that is...I just wanted to squelch that rumor. That is not me in the right seat there. I didn't want any of the council members to get a call saying that's the airport manager just tooling around the city right on his work time, but no, that is not me. That's one of our talented flight instructors at MTSU named Brian Simmons, a really great instructor. And if on your bucket list, you have to jump out an aircraft, he'd be the guy to call on weekends. So, thank you for, Mayor, and members of the City Council for this opportunity. Greatly appreciate being able to serve as the city's airport manager. I'd also like to take this opportunity, you know, Mayor Bragg always gave me a rough time about being the Department of One. And really, I don't have an opportunity to bring my other staff members here, but there are quite a few part-time employees that help serve out at the airport. And we may be a Department of One, but I guess we're all in one mindset of serving the city and the love of aviation. So, they are essential to our service that we provide out there. This last year, we were able to complete quite a few projects in starting with from environmental assessments to we were able to completely redo the exterior of two major hangars. One is used by the university for their flight simulator building and also for some other lab work that they do in there. And then also our Hangar Three, which is a major SESNA service center. And for the first time in many years, we have two separate environments, one inside the hangar and one outside. They don't match anymore. And we also were able to greatly improve the look of those facilities. Unfortunately, we were able...we had to paint over the paint that Joseph Adalot painted many years ago when he first started with the city, but we did that with his permission. We also were able to work on an area with the help of our neighbors, working on the approach control of our runway 36. We had trees that were penetrating an approach surface and that took our night ability to use that runway at night for visual approaches. And only through working with our neighbor and some of our departments were we able to complete that and we now have that night capability back. So, that was really important and I can't thank the neighbors enough for being so supportive and willing to work with us on that. We also will be starting in the...this next two weeks, the repaving of the ramp, a major work that pavement hasn't been addressed in maybe 30 years, except for some maintenance projects. And that will be a great improvement to the airport and which will be filed into next year's budget with resurfacing of the runway and runway improvements. This last year also had a little bit of a change in our...you'll see a decrease in our hangar rentals in that we had a decrease or a number increase in our occupancy rate went up. We had at one point 12 hangars available, a lot of 101. And that was a really strange event for us. It didn't follow the trend that we'd been seeing, but as of today, we have two hangars available. So, we're moving...we've gone through the waiting list and things are more back on track there. This next year, we will, like I said, be addressing the runway. We'll also be looking at possibly some road relocation with the changes that are occurring in that neighborhood. We'll also be looking at fencing and some security improvements in there. And also continue to work on our approach, to work with the neighbors on trees in that area. And if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any questions for Airport Director? Okay, thank you so much. We'll move into Community Development. That's page 172. And Mr. Callow, good seeing you.
So, he wants to talk about a Department of One with...but he's got a lot of part-time people. So, I have a Department of Two, but just one part-time person, but he gets all the attention, right? But we have a lot of help and this is a good time to talk about that. We have an incredible working relationship with Building and Coats Department, which lends us an inspector to help with the housing rehab program and with the inspections that we do with the affordable housing program. We have a great working relationship with the Urban Environmental Department because they do inspections to help us assess whether or not a tree qualifies for removal with part...which is part of the housing rehab program. The Water and Sewer Department evaluates all of our housing rehab programs to help us decide whether or not we need to do sewer or water work as part of a project. And then they also work with us on...or we work with them on the sewer tap program. So, we have a lot of partners to go along with our two and a half people. We brought you our action plan. This budget is in support of that action plan. We brought that to you in May. We received no public comments before we submitted it on May 15th to HUD for approval. We're expecting that action plan to be approved and our funds released on signing the contract with HUD. I'll point out that this plan that we submitted in May is the fifth plan of five for the current consolidated plan. So, next year, we will have a first-year action plan in support of a brand-new consolidated plan. We've already begun work on that. We'll be doing a lot of public meetings. We'll be gathering...doing a lot of public intake in support of developing that new consolidated plan over the next six or seven months because we'll need to have it ready for a public hearing in April. So, we'll be putting that on the website as we gather information for that. So, going back to the budget, I need to emphasize that this is a tentative budget only. Our budget is different from every other budget in the city in that because our funding for the Community Development Block Grant, if we don't spend it all in a year, it carries over to the next year. And that's going to affect how much funding we have available next year. We won't know that number until we close the books at the end of June. So, what we...we will do what we've always done and that's bring you a real budget, I guess for lack of a better term. We'll bring you the real budget in either September or October, once we know. It will follow this plan. We're...HUD says you do the action plan. You can change the numbers up to a certain point, but if you change it too much, you have to go through a whole process. So, we'll be staying within those limits. But nothing will change the core programs. We'll stay with...we'll be doing the housing rehab and the affordable housing. We will be spending...we're capped on what we can do for public service grants. We're recommending 15 grants for the coming year that were in the action plan. I need to also point out that we will have $178,902.35. How THDA came up with 35 cents for the Emergency Solutions Grant, I'll never know, but you'll have an item on your agenda Thursday night authorizing us to accept that grant, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with THDA. Also, you may recall that a number of months ago, you authorized us to apply for a home grant from Tennessee Housing Development Agency. We asked for $500,000. We have been notified that we're going to get $210,000. You'll have an item on your agenda on Thursday night authorizing us to accept that grant, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract and to accept environmental review authority for that grant. So, those will be coming Thursday. And I think that has...that's everything I want to say.
Okay.
Unless you have questions.
So, the home grant?
Yeah.
Where it's the home rehab projects, that's a different...
Yeah, the...yeah, it...the contract will allow for $12,600 for administrative expenses, which we'll be able to use to offset Community Development Block Grant administrative costs. So, that...we'll use that $197,000 and whatever and change for housing rehab. I will probably, when we come to you with our final budget in September, October, we'll probably adjust...make some adjustments for the CDBG rehab. And it's looking now...in fact, I got a note from Candy Roberts this morning telling us that we better be ready because the market is heating up. So, I'll probably move...recommending in the final budget, moving more money into the affordable housing program for down payment assistance.
Which is with THDA, correct?
Do what?
That's with THDA.
That's right. Yeah. It's HUD money through THDA, as is the Emergency Solutions Grant money.
Mr. Lance?
That's a state grant that then it's...is that...
Well, it's HUD money, but certain programs have different thresholds for getting a direct grant. The Community Development Block Grant, we get directly from HUD. The homeless money, there are three direct...Memphis, Nashville, and Chattanooga get Emergency Solutions Grant money directly from HUD. The rest of us get it through the state. The rest of us get it through the state. On the home, Murfreesboro is actually the second largest city in America that is not a home participating jurisdiction because one of the, which is incredible to me. But one of the factors in the formula, it's a formula grant, and one of the factors is your housing, the amount of your housing stock built before nineteen forty. And I think we all know pretty much what the population of Murfreesboro was in nineteen forty. We will never, ever hit the threshold because actually our number of pre-nineteen forty houses keeps going down between what Habitat tears down and rebuilds with new housing and what we tear down and reconstruct with Community Development Block Grant money. But, so we get our money through, we have to apply and it's competitive and we have to get it from, from THDA on home. And the home, they have added a requirement that we were using home money to do reconstructs, but we have to do just straight rehabs now. And we just, we don't have the flexibility that the, the HUD home program allows, unfortunately.
Any questions for Mr. Callow? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Callow.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We'll move to Fleet Services Fund, page one seventy-two.
Logan's going to handle that?
Okay. Ms. Logan's going to handle that for us.
Good evening, surprise. Actually, Mr. Hyatt's on vacation this week, so I am pitch hitting for him and glad to do so.
Page two thirty-eight. I'm sorry, Shannon. Page two thirty-eight. I gave you the wrong, the wrong number.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no. It's fine. So while Jack is enjoying his vacation, I will be glad to stand here and present to you the fleet departments and the Fleet Services Fund budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Our Fleet Services Department is an internal services department and they service all of the fleet's machinery, vehicles, et cetera, for the city of Murfreesboro. They have over seven hundred pieces of equipment in our city fleet that they maintain, that they keep inspections for, that they make sure that we are on the road. And that's how they engage our citizens, by making sure that our fleet of vehicles and machinery needed to provide the services is functioning and works properly for all of our departments. They're an outstanding department of thirteen people and they are just a delightful place to go visit. If anyone ever wants to go see them out on Florence Road, they would love for you to stop in. They love to show off all of the great things that they do for our city. If we have any type of vehicle or accident, vehicle breakdown, they're the first ones on the scene to try to assist. And they try to, their goal is always to turn around repairs within three days. And I think they do that about ninety-four percent of the time. And next year, they're trying to do that ninety-five percent of the time, which is an outstanding goal if you think about it. Seven hundred pieces of equipment in a fleet of our size to be able to turn around those types of repairs within three days is truly outstanding. In addition, they ensured this year, we have one hundred percent participation in meeting all of our inspections that are required through the state of Tennessee on our vehicles. So that just speaks to just the great job that all of our equipment mechanics do every day for us out there at Fleet Services. They have presented to you a balanced budget from their fund. Their funding actually comes from the departments which they service and that is where their, I mean, that's where their revenues come from and their expenditures and their revenues have to balance. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have about their budget that's been presented to you.
Okay. Great job, Ms. Logan. Okay. We'll now move to City Schools. That's on a separate notebook. Dr. Gilbert's here and so Mr. Anderson's here as well.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. I'm going to take about five minutes to tell you what we've been doing this year and then I'm going to turn this over to Gary and then I'll answer whatever questions he can answer. But I did want to talk about the changes that we've undergone this year. We have a new board member, Phil King, and two returning board members, Collier Smith and Nancy Renee. And we said goodbye to Chair Mary Wade. The board received the distinction of Board of Distinction and Mary Wade was named to the alternacy school board and we have a new board chair, Mr. Witch Campbell. Bradley Mitchell Nelson in Northfield participated in the China Vanderbilt Leadership Project and the Hangzhou Murfreesboro Partnership was signed through the efforts of MTSU. Every school was trained in the Oveius bullying prevention program as well as a comprehensive approach to behavior in partnership with MTSU. The Junior Chef Program was implemented and I know Mr. Smotherman has enjoyed that program. We had breakfast in the classroom also that was implemented this year. And then this summer, you may have seen on television, we have our Chow Bus, which stands for combating hunger on wheels. We have actually turned a school bus into a feeding bus for any children eighteen years and under in Murfreesboro. Bell times changed. That enabled us to move to a more efficient transportation system for our children, helped us reduce traffic at least a little bit in the areas of town where there seems to be overcrowding. Hobgood received a whole new administrative wing cafeteria and gained six classrooms. Bradley finally received an elevator and the West School became overall Creek Elementary. And then within the past few days, we have begun to regain Rees Rogers as a traditional pre-K six school to take care of the overcrowding at Pittard. And we also have moved the pre-kindergarten classrooms into the K through six schools and to move Discovery School back to Bellwood. So thank you for your support that you have given us, especially with the new school and with the elevator and also with the Hobgood renovations. And by the way, because we had extra time on our hands, we decided that we would rezone the whole city, which was quite a feat. Two school days were set aside for parent-teacher conferences and what we saw with that was a real increase in our parent participation in those conferences. So we will be keeping those this year in our calendar. MTSU partnerships expanded. The Collaborative Leadership and Learning Institute was formed with MTSU. That will be implemented this fall. The Gannett Center has placed personnel in three of our schools. We have a tremendous partnership with Lineball Library for library cards and access to databases. We partnered with the Discovery Center for a steam bus. We are having them use one of our buses. They've turned it into a science and technology, engineering and arts bus and mathematics bus, and they visit our fourth graders every other week. So that's been a tremendous benefit. And then we have the dental transport still with the Health Department and the Mobile Health Unit, of course. We have about five hundred children that receive backpacks of food each week. That's thanks to a partnership with Second Harvest and also with several of our faith-based organizations. We've really beefed our gifted program this year. We have several teachers who were trained last year at Vanderbilt and we will be sending another fifteen this summer to Vanderbilt, thanks to the Jennings or Rebecca Jones Foundation. Black Fox and Mr. Joe Thompson recently received the Educators Consumer Foundation Value Added Award. Leader in Me was established at Mitchell Nelson and Makin Music in partnership with Uncle Dave Makin Days began with Bradley. Murfreesboro City has received visits from the U.S. Department of Education this year. The state teacher ambassador and more than thirty schools and school districts have visited our, our district. Our personnel have presented at state, regional, and national conferences. Some of our teachers have been videotaped for NPT to use for professional development modules across the state. And we have held and hosted meetings of several regional and state organizations at our central office. Our transportation supervisor, Ava Jordan, received the Patriot Award from the Tennessee Employee Support Guard Reserve for her work supporting employees who are members of the Guard and Reserve. Our food service supervisor, Sandy Shealy, has served as president of the Tennessee School Nutrition Association. Several of our teachers were recognized across the states for the Titan Teacher of the Year and also the Tennessee Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Teacher of the Year. Of course, we purchased their technology and, and we're very proud to say that we also received the Mayor's Cup Trophy for entry into the Murfreesboro Christmas Parade. As far as this year, we'll be focusing on special education. You'll see that reflected in the budget with the special education budget. We want to be sure that we're seeing our children as children and not as labels. We also will be focusing on technology. In fact, tomorrow, all of our principals, some of our community members, our parents and students, will actually have a technology visioning day, all day at the central office. And then our third focus will be focusing on the gifted. And I've already mentioned that we will have additional teachers in training this summer. We continue to be focused on the whole child. We're very committed to that, that we are focused not only on academics, but also on the physical, emotional, and mental health needs of our children. And we continue to practice upside-down triangle, which means that the children are at the top of the triangle. And then our teachers are next and then our principals, our central office staff, and then at the bottom you find the director of schools and the school board. We presented to you a balanced budget. We have, we're getting the same amount of money. We're asking for the same amount of money as far as our general purpose that we've had for about eleven years now. Even with opening the new school, we've been able to do that really by dipping into fund balance and we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But before I turn it over to Gary, I do want to thank you for your support. We very much appreciate the fact that we can have a school system that's one of the top school systems in the state. We could not do that without you. I particularly want to notice the technology purchase that you allowed us to have this year. As you know, several of our schools would not have any technology at all by this time of the year if you had not moved forward with that. So thank you so much for that. Gary?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just to give a summary of our budget, we are proposing a little over fifty-eight million dollar budget for general purpose operating budget funds. Fifty-four percent of that comes from state revenues, right from the BEP and some other state funds. About thirty-three percent of our budget comes from the county and the city contributes about eight percent in addition to the county revenues. We're using about three point seven five percent of our budget as fund balance money, which is a little over two million dollars, about two point one million, to fund our overall budget. We're looking at increasing our students as we open up the new school. I have projected extremely conservatively on this because the state has changed the way they fund growth in this, in the state. They will not give us growth money and they'll give part of it in January, part at the end of the year, but they've cut the amount available in half. So I'm very nervous about projecting any additional high revenues for any additional students. So as I said, we've structured this whole thing very conservatively to protect us from getting, getting any kind of surprises on that. We've increased the budget overall of a hundred and ninety-three, almost a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars increase in the overall operating budget, which is less than, oh, it's point three-three percent. So it's, it's really a small amount that we've increased and yet we've picked up the additions of the opening up that new school, which is a little over a million dollars of expenditures to open up that new school to us. So Dr. Gilbert has led the district through some changes in how we do business to make sure we're running as efficiently as possible, things as changing the start times of schools, which, which meant that we could better utilize our transportation services by looking at the grade configurations and utilizing our buildings to the best possible means that we could. Overall, the budget, we feel confident that the budget can make us through the year. There, we still do have a fund balance above the required minimum from the state of Tennessee. We're about, almost a half a million dollars, a little between four and five hundred thousand above the minimum requirement. So we're confident that we can, we can make it through in that, with that amount and still pass the state's muster on what we have to have. And then if any specific questions anyone would have for us on any specific items, you obviously have their entire budget book that we presented to you.
I would like to recognize Chairman Campbell, who just came in. Thank you for being here. Not often you get recognized as soon as you walk in the door, Chairman Campbell.
I'm going to get up and be substituted.
All right. Do we have any questions for Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Anderson? Ms. Harris?
Uh, Dr. Gilbert and, excuse me, Mr. Anderson, I want to commend you on all these years you've come to us with the, no increase in your budget and you do a fabulous job. Every once in a while, I'll visit a school or two, Scales preferably, but I visit the Hobgood and different schools. I was amazed when I was going over your budget that we're opening, opening up overall Creek and it's going to cost us approximately one point two million and that you all are not asking for an increase. But I see in studying your budget where you're cutting your pre-K and that's saving you about four hundred thousand. But seemingly you're for the overall Creek school. So I know we have Black Fox, Oakland, Pittard, Franklin Heights, Rees Rogers, Mitchell Nelson, all of those have your two pre-Ks. I know Scales has one pre-K. Now, for the kids that are zoned for your new overall Creek school, they will be able to go there and to Head Start, right?
Right. And what, what we have done is, I actually have Cheryl Schmidt, who's been working on this. And what, what we did is we looked at the applications and where those applications would have been zoned. That really had a lot to do with where we had placement. Now, obviously, when you get to some schools, there just simply is no room. For example, Hobgood does not have room in the school building for a pre-K. That's the reason you'll find that both Mercury Court and also Oakland Court, which are offsites that we have in partnership with the housing, Murfreesboro Housing Authority, those children would be zoned there then because there's, even though we built on Hobgood, we're packed. We're packed there.
And just looking at that, I was just looking at the equality across the city, you know, for all of our students to make sure because one big thing in the state is behind on our test scores.
Right.
Especially, I know we are down this year in the third grade and we want to make sure that all of our kids have a, an equal start and you're doing a great job in dispersing these kids. I was just wondering if by chance some of these kids don't get outsourced to some of the other schools, will you all consider maybe the overall Creek school possibly opening up one pre-K so we make sure we're accommodating all of our kids?
Well, I think, I think what we'll do probably is look at where those applications are. Right now, what I'm seeing is the applications, we have very few applications from that area. Now, part of that may be because of the way we're funded. We're funded both by the volunteer, what's called the volunteer pre-K, which is the governor's program. We're also funded by Title. In order to qualify for the governor's program, you're looking at low socioeconomic families. In order to qualify for the Title funding, you're looking for students who are academically behind. Now, traditionally, that's going to follow along with your socioeconomic, but not always. The advantage of having our four volunteer pre-Ks, which we did cut, was we could take up to that, that next level. What we're looking at, at doing, Ms. Harris, is next year, I've already talked with Joe Marlin, who's our special ed supervisor. The county has a program and, and we really want to move to it, not necessarily because it's the county, because it's best practice, where we have with our CDC classrooms, we have what are called typically developing peers. So we will be taking those higher income students or students who are not at risk academically and putting them in with the CDC classrooms. So we are looking at that next year. We did not feel that we had time to really do a good job with that this year and since we were already moving some of our, our special needs children, we did not want to do that this year. But we are looking at doing that next year and we feel that that will give us some additional spots for some of our pre-K children.
And you're doing a great job on that outsourcing. That's, that's a good thing. And I know fifty percent of our sales tax goes toward education, but we have to look at the student ratio, you know, city versus county, and I understand that.
Right.
So that's, that's excellent. You all are looking at that. Also, in reviewing your budget, I noticed you were cutting the janitorial service, which is costing you approximately two hundred thousand. So right there, there are six hundred thousand that I see where you've cut. A concern I have for the janitorial service, seems like sometimes when we go cutting, we start at the bottom, you know, we cut like cafeteria workers, janitorial service, and I see where we are saving two hundred thousand by outsourcing your janitorial service. In that, you know, we have, we're, it's all about the children. And in our schools with so much violence and crazy things happening in the schools that the children feel safe when they know Mr. Gary, know Mr. Toby. You know, the janitorial service people, they are kind of moms and dads away from home to our kids. With this outsourced company, I know they are agreeing to keep our janitors, which I am very happy to hear that, if the principals want them. And also, they're going to pick up the benefits. Now, I know with your outsourced service that I think every three years you all have renewed your contract. So some of these janitors have been working fifteen-plus years in the city. So therefore, you know, benefits are very, very important to them. And their salaries are very low anyway. And I was just wondering, in looking at that and this group of people, if you would consider when you're out bidding for your companies, if you were putting your criteria- when you're out bidding for your companies, if you were putting your criteria that they do what they're doing now is to continue to pick up the benefits of the people that they hire as the janitors, you know, pick up their benefits. Now, if they don't, in the future, if you would, and Mr. and Gary, if you all would consider in your budget picking up their benefits because, you know, when you're talking about people who have been working 10 and 15 years and these janitors in these schools, they take a lot of pride in their job. And losing benefits, that's a concern I have, but right now, we're good because the company we're using are picking up the benefits. But again, I would like to see if you all would consider when you're outsourcing in your criteria that you throw out for bids that they do pick up the benefits of these people.
I'll let Gary respond to that, but I think that one of the things we have talked about is right now, what we have with our current contract is that they would pick up indeed, as you've said, those people who we have that have been our employees and would continue to hire them if the principals want that. And I don't know of any reason why we couldn't stipulate that in the next bid, right?
We can establish our request for a proposal any way we want to lay us our groundwork for it. What we did on this time is we had made sure that the employees were going to receive their same rate of pay, they would receive full paid employee health insurance, full paid dental insurance and a death benefit as well. They do have a retirement plan. Of course, it cannot be the state retirement plan, but the employees get to keep their state retirement plan where they are now, but they do have another retirement plan as well. We did it to basically protect our employees in this transfer over to this, to a custodial service company. So, when we establish a new RFP, we will put the same type of safeguards in that so everyone's bidding on the same level. So, someone can't come in and undercut something. If it's in our, if it's in our request that says they must provide X, then that's what they would be having to make their bid on.
Okay. That's good. I appreciate that. And if you would consider, now, this is way out there, but if they don't pick up the benefits, if you just look at in your budget, maybe picking up the benefits of the people because here you have people that have been working 15-plus years and it's terrible to lose your benefits. And also in studying your budget, I see that, like I mentioned before, you've done a fabulous job with not coming to us for any more money, but I know that you are stripping your, what we call fund balance fund or your savings account. So, opening up this new school with the $1.2 million, it's going to be interesting.
Well, I think you'll probably get visits from me in the future.
Right. That's what I was getting at, right. But you all do a fabulous job, but those two things, and I saw where $600,000 is the two cuts that I mentioned, but you do a fabulous job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Lance?
And so, just to piggyback on what she said a little bit, what are those people who are going to be contracting with the new service? What are they losing? Are they losing years of service? What's going to be the downside? I mean, it sounds like you've done, taken some measures, but I don't think we could cover everything. What did they lose?
What they lose is they cannot participate in the state retirement plan, but they don't lose, they don't lose the fact that they have that plan. It stays with them, but they cannot contribute anymore nor can we contribute anymore to that plan. So, they have an alternative retirement plan. The health insurance is, we're on the state plan, so our health, the health insurance plan that they'll pick up is slightly different than ours. It's just not the same state plan. Dental plan is same, same basic dental plan we have. The biggest savings for the company is the transition between day and night custodial services, whereas now we have day custodians and the night come in. Well, what can, they can blend the jobs better together. We also have in that where they pick up all of the paper goods, all the chemicals and all the cleaning supplies that we don't pay for that as part of our contract to help us as a district. But the employees really, this company took over the services in Davidson County a few years ago and we got the same plan as they did on health insurance because they had to step it up for Davidson County and plus we got our employees' salaries matched, whereas Davidson County, they did not. So, we feel really good about what we were able to negotiate for our employees in this process.
Is their current, is the new, the company, is it a defined benefit plan that their retirement plan or a defined contribution plan?
It's a contributory plan. If the employee puts in, I'm just picking a number, say 3% of their salary, they will match up to 4%. The company will on top of that.
Yeah. So, they got the same salary, but now they're going to have to contribute their own money to get to retirement?
To the retirement plan, right.
And I guess a concern too I have, not on, and that's not picking on your department at all, but it's just, you know, we're recognized nationally, Murfreesboro is, and I know it takes money to operate our city. There's no doubt about that and I know we have to cut corners and everything, but as we progress as a city and people are coming here for retirement and people like us, we don't want to leave here. I know I don't want to leave because I like our city and I want us as a council to, maybe not, we have to look at the money, council members, we have to look at our money, but the most important source is our people and I don't want us ever to put money over people and their needs. And as a council, we're doing good, but, you know, we serve God by serving our fellow man and I don't ever want us to put that dollar amount over the service that our people are getting.
Thank you.
On a slightly different subject, the wonderful thing is we've got all new computers and all new technology and all the benefits of what we've just gone through with technology. The downside of that is about five years from now, we'll have a complete fleet of five-year-old equipment. Are we preparing for that now? Are we already starting to replace those units this year? Not to replace them, but to bring in new equipment this year so that we don't wind up in a situation five years from now of saying, oh, my goodness, we need $5 million worth of new equipment again. Are we planning for that? Do we have that in the budget?
What we have in the budget is a little over $400,000. That's going to be, that's in our budget now, which will continue to be in our budget once it's got a placeholder in there. So, we're considering that our share of this is going to continue on because you're going to have to start replacing them again in five or six years. There's no sense in starting turning them over now. You know, when we get to that point, we'll have to do that. So, we are aware of that and we're hoping, of course, the city recognizes that come five years from now, when the things are paid for, we're going to have to probably go back and look at re-upping again for the technology. Because technology is, typically, schools run technology five to seven years and we were pushing beyond that envelope. Businesses typically three and schools are five to seven.
And I know we don't need to buy new computers this coming year, but my question is, are we putting that money back that we would buy those computers with so that when we get down the road five years from now, we, are we saving that money or are we spending that money? I guess is the question because if we're saving it for future purchases, I think we're fine. If we're spending that money and we're not putting any money back, then we're going to wind up in the same situation down the road and, you know, that's not a good situation to put anybody in.
In our current budget, by putting that money in the operating budget, in our mind, we are putting it in for the operation part now. We've used a tremendous amount of our fund balance. We don't have any more money to set aside for the fund balance. When we build our fund balance back up, over the previous three years, we built the fund balance up very well and that's what made us be able to do this and utilize our fund balance now. So, we're not, we're not setting aside any additional funds if that's what you're asking. We don't have the additional funds to set aside in our operating budget this time.
I think what we're seeing is this, being aware that this is going to be ongoing, that's, at least that's my attitude toward it, is that although we're purchasing the computers now, we know that we're paying whatever we're paying every year and I don't see that stopping after the five years. I don't know how we can.
I think what we have to look out, look at as a council, that, you know, our funding for the city school system, although we look at the 4.8 million that we have given that has stayed pretty static for the last, or fixed for the last 11 years, we do look at Pittered and we look at our debt service costs that we have paid as a council on building the new schools. And as we look at Mr. Crumley's slide, that we start seeing our borrowing cost and our debt service fund goes down, I think that unless I'm wrong, Mr. Lyons, we're internally having to budget to say, five years from now, seven years from now, we're going to have to also in our CIP plan, budget for fixed asset purchases for our school system. And so, that's going to be, Mr. Schmidt, I think that's something that as a, as a council, we're going to have to budget to do if our funding level stays where it is.
If they're not going to fund it, we're going to have to fund it, is what you're saying and I understand that and I was just, you know, whether it's built into the capital plan for five years down the road, you know, Mr. Lyons, are we doing that? I guess that's my question.
I think that's part of us, taking that longer-term look at where we're going with debt and the needs of the city. You know, when I first got to the city, it seemed like every year we were borrowing 60, $68 million. There were back-to-back years we borrowed $68 million. What's happened recently is we've borrowed money about every other year and they've been in the $40 million range. So, we're going to achieve some capacity with the fact that our borrowing slowed down, but we do need to pay attention long-term to, you know, kind of setting up some sinking funds to account for those, you know, big purchases.
And what you're saying-
And it's not just the schools. I mean, it's, we're seeing it right here in this building itself, I mean, with technology and, of course, we're experiencing with the IT department, but I guess, you know, that from a long-range approach, I just want to make sure that we're looking down the road and saying, we know these things are coming and it's almost like buying police cars, you know, at some point. It would be nice if we didn't have to borrow money to buy something that we know is going to have an expiration date on it the day we buy it.
Agreed.
And so, that would just be the direction that I would like for us to try and work towards.
Absolutely. And Mr. Lyons, we are on our eighth year on Pittered, or not Pittered, yes, Pittered. I know we went through the first graduating class of someone who could have started there and have graduated, but what schools do we have that are rolling off our debt service next?
Pittered, Scales and then Overall Creek.
Okay. So, I think that is good to look at, that we only have three schools that we currently have debt on. And, you know, when we think of Scales and we think of Pittered, I think we're looking at relatively, we think, we see those as new schools. So, Overall Creek and as Scales and Pittered roll off, that allows us to take debt service off where we can do exactly what you're talking about. I think it's a great point.
Yeah. Mr. Young reminded me of Hobgood. We borrowed some money for the renovation there.
Ms. Gilbert, I think it'd be good also that how was the, how was, what was the board vote on your budget?
We, the board voted unanimously for it.
Okay.
Nice question. So, the amount that you've drawn from your fund balance was how much?
And I think the board voted unanimously on it. That's been a while. I don't, all right, 5 to 2. Okay, 5 to 2. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
On our fund balance this year, we're looking at $2,186,000.
So, the $400,000 that you were talking about having a marker for, does, would you, you would have drawn off your fund balance 1.7 million and then there's the extra $400,000 that you've drawn off of fund balance to cover that or does that count that way?
No. The state requires that we have 3% of our expenditures as our fund balance, which is 1.7 million. So, what we show is what we anticipate having in fund balance at the end of the year versus what we have to have is about $452,000 excess, which means we'll meet the state standard of fund balance in reserve.
The $400,000 marker for the new computers?
That's in our operating, I thought you were talking about the fund balance.
No, yeah.
I'm sorry. That part is in our, is in our operating, in our budget.
Okay. So, it doesn't affect the fund balance is what I'm trying to ask?
No, it's already in our, it's already in our operating budget.
All good questions.
You all can pinch a penny. You do a good job penny-pinching.
Well, we are aware that the, we are aware that the council has funded us with capital outlay, but as I said, we will be needing to talk with you this year because we can't really draw any more out of fund balance. We're as far as we can go and now when we have to cut, it really will impact instruction and we just, we can't do that. Our teachers and our principals and central office staff do an amazing job. If you look at the demographics and what we're facing as far as a growing city and a changing city, they do a tremendous job. So, I'm just blessed to be able to work with them and on behalf of them, thank you very much for what you do for us.
Look forward to seeing Overall Creek get opened up.
Yes.
Full steam ahead. It's a beautiful school.
Yeah, it's going to be really nice. Thank you so much.
Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Anderson, Chairman Campbell, I know we don't get to see the school board very often and Council Member Washington's our liaison, but thank you for what all you and your board do and then thank you for what you do for all of our kids who are in the city. So, we look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you so much.
You do a great job.
As a liaison, you know, all these issues we've discussed about future funding, so Matt and you did a good job bringing that stuff up and so did you and Rob and I, we all have had these discussions about, you know, we've got to change some things up in the future when it comes to funding, uh, funding them. Because it has been, for a long time, and things are changing and everything you said, Council Swindman and you were talking about, Ms. Harris, uh, yep, next few years, it's going to be, it's going to be fun navigating, navigating the borrowing and what rolls off, what new borrowing comes on and where you get the funding from and give them some relief, especially when the state's sending them less money than they've had in the past.
Yeah, they've sent you about, about half of your percentage this year, didn't they? Was it almost?
As far as what the state sent.
The state, when I was looking at your figures, I mean, they dropped you pretty much?
Yes, the state, we're getting less from the state this year and the reason is, is last year they gave us a one-time expenditure to help pay for some computer equipment, but this year we're getting a quarter of a million dollars less than we got last year from the state.
Yeah, I saw, I saw about 2%. I said, that was a big, that really opened my eyes when I read that figure. That was, they really kind of cut you a little bit.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll move to Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department and then also the Storm Water Management Fund and those are going to be on your colorful Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department budget.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm going to pull up a presentation, but I was, I do the Twitter thing and I got a John Maxwell quote the other day that says, "Your attitude is either your best friend or worst enemy, your greatest asset or your greatest liability." And I think the attitude at the Water and Sewer Department, the other city departments, council, city administration's been great. I'm coming up on my two-year anniversary as director and it's just been a joy to work with the professionals that we have in the city and everybody's so cooperative and helpful. So, thank you and hopefully our attitude is, is good. I gave you a PDF of the presentation, if it's easier for you to follow on your iPad. If you'd like to see the animation, it'll be on the TV. Basically, what we're trying to do here at the very onset is to balance affordability and sustainability. There's some great sustainable solutions that aren't very affordable, but we want to find those best practices that are sustainable as well as maintaining affordability for our low-income residents. We also want to be performance-driven. I think Doug told me yesterday that that sounded like an '80s Toyota commercial, performance-driven, but maybe we're reusing an old Toyota slogan there, but we do want to go through some of our performance metrics. At the end of the day, we're, we are, our revenues this year are budgeted at $42 million. That's, that's $4.5 million over last year's budget, but it's basically, we're looking at the FY14 projections and I think we, our FY14 projections are ahead of what we budgeted last year, coupled with the 50 cents per month rate increase that we were talking about with you a couple of weeks ago. We're looking at about $2 million of revenue generated by rates, but the other, the $2.5 million to make up that $4.5 million is through TAPs. And TAP revenue is indicative of growth and it's actually expensed to working reserves. So, what we take for growth in TAP revenue is put into the savings account effectively. So, it's not applied to any operating expenses. So, it's not applied to any operating expenses. The expenses are balanced with revenue. Looking at the expense from year to year, you can see that those TAPs, there's about a $3.8 million reserve expense, expense greater than last year. Two and a half million of that is the TAP revenue that's going to this reserve. You've got to think of reserves as almost putting money into that working capital account. What we're doing with that excess is we've created some sinking funds. You were talking about the computers a while ago with the schools. That's exactly what we're doing here on several replacement, repair and replacement projects. We have anticipated debt service coming on. Until that debt service comes, we are going to take that excess revenue earmarked for significant repair and replacement projects. Now, those replacement, those sinking funds may, like for example, we have a six-year sinking fund at 375,000 for the Fournier presses. We've got a five-year sinking fund at 200,000 for the water plant membrane replacement. At the time the debt service does come online, then we will, we may have to discontinue those sinking funds. So, you have to look at these sinking funds as in lieu of debt service right now. Looking at the operating expense, we've got a 3% increase in the salaries and wages and benefits, 315,000. We also have 283,000, which is a 15% increase in other, and other encompasses somewhat, I think, the undesignated fund that Rob, Rob mentioned a while ago. It's property insurance, building and grounds, uniforms, biosolids, and odor control, statement billing, computer maintenance, those kind of things that don't really fit into other categories. The reason for the $283,000 increase is due to the new CIS software that we've implemented, which by the way, we just went live Monday with our new CIS software, that maintenance, and also the contribution amount that we're going to be giving the city for the, that the Water and Sewer Department will benefit from as well, the ERP software that's going to be implemented upcoming. The number of employees by division, I just wanted to highlight this real quick. We have, the yellow numbers kind of indicate the pluses that we're looking at for FY14. We're looking at one and a half employees at the wastewater treatment plant. Those are equipment operators that will be managing the effluent disposal at the Jordan and Coleman Farms. We have one additional employee at the ONM facility, that's a full-time secretary receptionist. And then we have a plus-one conditional meter reader at our meter reading services. That's conditional upon when we implement our advanced metering infrastructure. When AMI comes onboard, that conditional meter reader may be no longer required. Looking at the debt service, this is just a cash flow diagram, I think, that you've seen several times. It illustrates four, the four major projects that we have going on. The first half of that 58.33 million debt, we expect to have that spent by the third quarter of FY15. The second half of that 58.3 million, we expect to have that spent by the first quarter of 2018. That gets into our cost of service and our pro forma. The solid bars represent past years of cost of service. The F, the 2018 represents a pro forma that includes the debt service, but plus about 3.5% of operating expenses. What we've done with our rate design is we've approached it from a levelized rate design, meaning we're looking at small increments, uniform increments over the next four to five years, in lieu of a step increase, which is a little more, has a little more impact maybe on the, on the budgets of your normal homeowner. Stormwater budget, we do have about 1.9% increase in revenue budgeted this year, about 2.2% increase in expenses. You can see that, that there's a deficit there that goes to the working reserves of the stormwater fund. On page 90 of your notebook, we do have a very detailed stormwater capital improvements plan. It's over a five-year period. Right now, there's an aggressive plan to spend about 4.3 million in FY15. It would take that, that working capital reserve balance to about 1.7 million, which doesn't violate our financial management policies, which says 12 months of, maintain 12 months of operating expenses. When we look at performance and goals, we did, well, we downloaded an effective utility management performance benchmarking spreadsheet, and we were able to define this year current and target performance. So, where the green and blue line get close together, that's where our performance is pretty close to our target. Where the green line is farther away from the blue line, those are, in areas that we, where we believe we need to step up. We did also participate for the first time in the American Waterworks Association 2012 benchmarking study, so we were able to get some metrics from some national peers. So, with regards to customer satisfaction, upcoming goal is the advanced metering infrastructure, namely, this is going to be customer satisfaction, namely through early leak detection. This will not be implemented in FY15, it'll start. Hopefully by FY16, we will have it complete. We're also looking, and we're, we understand the growth that's occurring in our city. Community sustainability is very, very large. I think our wastewater plant is going to determine how our growth, aggressive our growth can continue. We're doing some significant studies on the west and east Fortstones River that are probably going to take two to three years. We're looking for additional assimilative capacity within those creeks, rivers. We have found some underground rivers that we're doing some hydrologic studies to see if we see some increase in some base flows. We've got some underground streams that start out at Snail Shell Cave and come all the way. The white circle there, that's outlined, that's the old LoJack quarry off Old Nashville Highway, where a significant underground river has been found. It, it comes out at these springs where Overall Creek hits the West Fort. With regards to our financial viability, we have about 1.7 times the utility standard on cash reserves, which is, which is strong. We're also at a 1.8 debt coverage ratio, and 1.2 is our goal. With regards to organizational development, we've got, we're above average on our training hours per employee. We're below retirement eligibility and employee turnover rate, which is good. We're a little below on customer accounts per employee, but we're within the 90, 95% target there, so we're not, we're not too far off. Product quality, we've made some significant process modifications at the wastewater plant in removing nitrogen, which just allows us to get our permit through the state Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, which will allow us to close on our state-revolving loans that's about a 1% fixed rate, which is good, good money. That's going to allow us to expand the plant and meet the quality standards, the water quality standards of the state. The byproduct of this, I may have sent it out to you earlier, is we're actually saving energy, saving power by operating in this fashion. So, we're seeing about $135,000 savings in power. Last, last slide, we're looking at operational optimization. We have budgeted in the stormwater account a jet, a jet-vac truck and a grade all, so that Mr. Hillis and his outstanding crews can do a little bit of that repair and replacement on their own, without having to subcontract that out, be able to shape these ditches a little bit when they need, when they need to. I do want to mention that as far as the ultimate sustainability, we are looking at coming forward to the council with a water resource integration plan, which is going to be a companion document to the city's comprehensive plan, because we want to make sure that as the city's comprehensive plan develops, that the water resources and water, and water and sewer infrastructure is out there as a foundation to support the vision of the council. So, with that, I'll, I'll open it up for questions.
Any questions from Mr. Gore? Okay, Mr. Gore? We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Obviously, if you have any more, if you have questions that, after starting between now and Thursday night, we can always ask more questions on Thursday night. All right, Mr. Lyons, do we have any other business to come before the council?
I guess, just would like to get some direction. We did advertise, I guess, kind of a quick check here. We know we don't want to make any numbers changes till after the budget public hearing. So, if there were any other items you wanted to talk about this evening, we did budget and advertise for a 4:00 PM meeting on Thursday, and I looked to the council to see if you felt a need to, to meet then. When you look at your agenda for Thursday evening, you're going to see the budget public hearing, discuss any changes, so you certainly have an opportunity to do it either at 4:00 on Thursday or 7:00 on Thursday, and just like to get some direction about what you would like to do next.
Any changes can't be made until after, that hearing takes place at the 7:00 meeting.
Correct.
So, unless, I guess what you're saying is unless any of us feel there are any in-depth discussions we need to have prior to that in anticipation of it, then there's really no need to meet at 4, but to wait until 7 and have the hearing?
That would suit us just fine.
The public hearing will be at 7.
Yeah, the public hearing is at 7:00 PM.
I think it'd be a good idea, if you have any questions or changes that you look to email Mr. Lyons, or Ms. Wright, so that way we, they can be, be prepared for those. But, and I know we're, we're going to need to, we have one employee that is not set on our pay scale, so we're going to need to discuss the city manager's raise or not. So, on Thursday night, so if you'll be thinking about that as well. Mr. Lance, the city manager is not under the same pay plan?
He can't recommend his own raise. We have to do that unless we forget, and then he does without.
Yep.
I've been having amnesia lately.
Thursday night will be-
Rob, for the sake of presentation, Thursday night, are you comfortable with the direction that we gave you last night on the Boys and Girls Club? Did you get a comfortable enough opinion as to-
I did not get-
How to adjust the budget one way or the other?
I did not get a feeling of a consensus, and as I talked to Aaron today, we were just going to put a, as we give you the information for Thursday night about the changes that you've talked about, so far there was an outside agency and the health insurance change that we were going to put, to be determined by council, note on there, because at this point, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the, well, the council is at that.
And I guess that's okay, if, if we do that Thursday night then, as far as making sure that we all agree on whatever number it is that we wind up with.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that I believe is the only number that I'm not exactly sure what you're putting on.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of, other than insurance, I don't think there was any numbers that we were in question on. Should we resolve that now, or would you rather us wait till Thursday night?
Ron, it also brought up adding Greenhouse Ministries request. I think that's the only two.
And I think, as I see Ms. McGinnan squirming a little bit, that, that we, we, I don't think we, or can we talk about that now, or do we need to wait till after the public hearing on what we have been presented?
You can certainly talk about it now. I wouldn't recommend that you vote on it now.
Okay.
We just have a discussion about it after we have the public hearing and resolve both of those at the same time, maybe.
I'll start off by recommending that we do honor the Greenhouse Ministries request at 2:00 PM.
But again, we can't vote on that.
I'm just throwing it out on the floor.
Just making sure she doesn't throw a pencil at you or anything.
And I agree with Doug 100%.
All right, so what we'll do, if you have any other changes or any other questions, if, if you would email Mr. Lyons, and then after we have the public hearing, we'll go through changes that, that each of you would want to present, and then also a recommendation on the city manager's salary for 2015.
And Ms. Lyons, as to the health insurance, the additional premium, I believe what I saw Ms. Russell sent us today on the PPO plan, it's about, only about $5 a month instead of nine, that we were talking about yesterday, that would increase the employee side to have that diagnostic benefit. Is that correct?
Yep. And Ms. Tucker is calculating the impact of that on each of the funds, so that we'll have that for Thursday night as well.
Okay.
I'm getting the message.
You know, communication won't work when we do a public hearing.
Correct. As Mr. Gillie mentioned, there's one other area of employees that I don't have the ability to make any recommendation on pay increases, and that would be employees who are topped out. If they are at the top step, the city manager has no place to increase their pay. That has always been a council discussion, so we will get you some information on that as well. In the past, you've asked for that, and we can share that information with you as well.
Okay.
Just as a question, side note, about how many employees of the 900 employees do we have that are topped out? Is there a percentage? Did you got some idea?
I want to say it was in the 50 range, 50 to 60.
60.
Okay. So, it's a pretty substantial amount if they're topped out.
Would it be pertinent to know kind of when those ranges were set up? I assume if a position was, you know, there was a top level, a top-out level that was set up in 1950, it might be less appropriate than one that was set last year.
Well, in last year's budget, we adjusted the pay plan by, you know, what we would call add a step, drop a step. So, the old step, step one fell off, and the old step two became step one. What that also meant was there was a new step added to the top. So, last year, we didn't see anybody topped out, but employees who have been with the city for some time, especially in the same position, it may be at that very top step, and, and there's no place for me to recommend a step nine if one does not exist.
Already 50 or so of those people have already hit it since last year?
Correct. So, it's-
It would have been a fair number last year, but because of the way we did the pay plan last year, it's a go or not.
And then, you know, as a reminder, we're looking at all of the pay ranges in the class and comp study as well, but I wanted to get that information to you, because that's been a traditional step on the council.
I'd like to see us definitely give everybody something, even the topped out. I mean, we all go to the same stores and everything. Come on, guys.
Well, and I think ours is determined by the state. I don't think they can give us anything.
Yeah, I'd be glad to get you that information.
Yeah, if, if it'd be possible, that probably would be good if you wouldn't mind sending that to us, so we would have time to review that before the meeting on, on Thursday night.
Yes, sir, be glad to.
So, we will meet Thursday night, 7:00. We did have advertised that we could meet tomorrow night, tomorrow.
Thursday at 4.
Okay. Thursday at 4, so we will not meet at 4 unless anyone wants to. So, we'll meet at 7:00 on Thursday night. Do we have any other business that would come before the council?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.